Hi, this is Rose Munoz and I'm here to start our board meeting with closed session. Ms. Trujillo, do we have any public comments on closed session items? Okay, so we will go ahead and proceed into the other room for closed session. Thank you. I am Rose Munoz and we have concluded closed session this evening. It is April 26, 2022, 5:40 PM and I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And now for information about interpretation for this meeting.
Thank you. We have Spanish interpretation for this meeting, so if anybody would like headsets to listen to the Spanish interpretation, we have those in the back. Buenas tardes, tenemos interpretación al español disponible para esta reunión. Si alguien gusta escuchar la reunión en español, tenemos audífonos disponibles. Gracias. Thank you.
Okay, and then information about ASL interpretation is on the screen. And Dr. Maldonado, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Please stand and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to announcement from closed session action and general comments, the board voted unanimously in closed session with a 4-0 vote, with Board Member Wendy Sims votin' not present for the vote to appoint Kenya Edison as the next Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. And Dr. Maldonado, would you like to give us your report?
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, board members and everyone here today. I'd like to start our superintendent's report, as we have many times, with our principal spotlight. I'd like to invite Principal Clancy Chu Merritt. As many of you know, she's ending her first principalship, her first year as principal, which in pandemic years counts for more than one year. And I want to thank her and congratulate her for doing so well. And just invite her to tell us a little bit about Galita Valley Junior High School. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I think my slides will come up there. There we go. So, good evening, Board President Munoz, Board Members, Superintendent Maldonado, and Cabinet Members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to just take a few minutes here tonight and give you a little glimpse into what Galita Valley Junior High is all about. Next slide, please. So first, it's really important to know that Galita Valley Junior High is home of the Mariners. We are the Mariners. Next slide, please. So, I feel it is such an honor to lead Galita Valley Junior High. I have amazing students, amazing families, amazing staff. And I just wanted to share these words. These are something I carry with me every day that I get the privilege to go do what I do. Next slide, please. So I am sticking with Superintendent Maldonado's ABCs of schooling, the academics, belonging, and connections. I feel this is a really great way to give you just a glimpse into what we do on a daily basis to improve academic progress for every student, to build the sense of belonging, and to create connections both within Galita Valley as well as with our extended community. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go a little out of order. I'm going to go with the belonging first because at Galita Valley, this is the essence. This is what we start with. It's our foundation in order for us to do the work we know we need to do in academics. And so we build our culture on the GV mission, which is SAIL. And so we are really working to ensure safety, accountability, inclusion, and learning for all. And I'm pretty sure if you come to my campus and talk to any of my students, they will be able to tell you what SAIL is because they always miss Chu and her sale. Next slide, please. So in terms of building a culture, it's really about building safe and inclusive learning environments across our entire campus. I wanted to just highlight a couple of the ways we as a staff work to do this. And so the first is really recognizing, we are a ramp school. So we are the first, I believe, in our district to be a ramp school, which is a recognized ASCA model program. And so what that is, is a national acknowledgement of our school counseling program. And so our rock star counselors deliver a comprehensive school counseling program that supports all of our students in the three main areas of academics, social-emotional, and college career. The other pictures there in the middle is our first year of having a student center. And this is something that really supports our students on a daily basis in the areas of academic, social-emotional, and behavior. So that's been super great. And then on the right-hand side, I just wanted to identify, and you can't see behind on the slide there, but that's a picture of our library technician. But every single staff person on our campus, teachers, support staff, office staff, we are all coming together to ensure and to encourage our students to identify a safe person, a safe adult on campus, to support them when they need it. Next slide, please. And for the students, this building of our culture in SAIL, we are really, really encouraging them to find ways to connect with people and things across our campus. And we do that in the form of electives. And that, we have a very comprehensive elective programs to support students' interests and passion. We have a whole range of clubs. You'll see our art club there, our chess club. We have after-school sports. And we also have really done a great job of instilling a lot of lunchtime activities. A favorite of our kids was the three-on-three basketball league that happened and that culminated in Students Against Staff. And they love that. And the more we can get them at junior high feeling connected to school, the better they do with their learning across the board. Next slide, please. And the other part I wanted to highlight in SAIL is this notion of accountability. We're really working to instill a sense of accountability to self and others. So we have school-wide agreements for students, teachers, administrators, and parents. And we share those. We revisit those in very intentional ways. We also really like to, want to highlight when our students are doing their part in these areas. So one of the ways we do that is our Super Sailor. We have raffle tickets that teachers fill out and put in our Super Sailor box that you see there. And every Friday, we are announcing and calling out names of students who have met some area of either safety, accountability, inclusivity, or learning. And then we have weekly class competitions. So we're trying to instill a little group accountability as well. And so that's been really helpful in that area. Next slide, please. So going to the area of academics, junior high, we have two very short years to really instill some foundational skills that our students will carry into high school and ultimately beyond. And we also recognize that they are heading to a society that's changing at a rapid pace. So for us, we ground our design of learning around this notion of deeper learning skills and knowledge. And so let me give you a glimpse of what that entails. Next slide, please. So for deeper learning skills and knowledge, we absolutely want our students to understand key content standards. But we want them to move beyond an understanding to applying that understanding so that they are both formulating and solving problems. We also want to help them build skills so that they can collaborate and cooperate with their peers to both form problems and solve them. Next slide, please. We're also working in these learning environments for them to increase their skills, to take information, data that they might collect, and be able to share that to designated audiences. And then the last two there are so important. We want every student to be empowered. We want them to be able to feel that they are a learner. We want them to drive their learning and ultimately have a positive mindset and see themselves as a learner. So those are the focus areas of what we look at when we're designing learning activities for our students. Next slide, please. So coming to the last one, connections. We are really about creating partnerships both across our site at GV but also with our extended community. So I wanted to give you a quick little example of that on the next slide, please. So the picture on the left there is we have partnered with the group AHA and we just recently finished a six-week class where families came together for six weeks. They shared a meal together. They shared conversation. They had discussion. And they focused on a range of topics really related to raising a teenager. So that was a really great event for our families. In the middle, I wanted to highlight, we have a range, a partnership with UCSB. We have a range of tutors that come on our campus and really act in two ways. They're providing academic support, but they're also providing mentorship to our students. So we find that very valuable. And lastly, a recent partnership on Saturday, as a celebration of Earth Day, we had parents as part of our PTA students and from college students, from Your Children's Trees that we partnership, support from district facilities. We all came together and planted 15 new trees on our campus, which will not only beautify our campus, provide well-needed shade, but also will be a learning aspect as we, they are putting little codes on the trees so that students will be able to scan that and learn about native trees as part of our campus. And so, next slide, please. So lastly, again, thank you for letting me take a few minutes to give you a glimpse of Galita Valley Junior High. This is a picture of the front of our school. I think it's fitting that our symbol is the anchor. We do strive at Galita Valley to be the anchor for every student that comes on our campus in the ways that I just described. And so I invite you, come anytime, come visit us, and go Mariners.[696.81][696.81][applause]
Thank you so much. We're extremely proud of you and please extend our gratitude to your staff as well. Next, I'd like to introduce Anna Pilhofer. Last week, we selected her as our Director of Emergent Multilingual Students. And she'd like to just say a few words to tell us a little bit about her and her new role.
So Board President Munoz, Dr. Maldonado, Board and Cabinet, I am so thrilled to be able to be here in front of all of you. This is an incredible privilege and opportunity to serve our students and families, and I'm ready for the charge. I've been on this journey that's prepared me for this role for 22 years. It started on the border of El Paso and Chihuahua. That's where my mother is from. And I grew up in a household with two language learners in two languages. So having a multilingual home with very humble beginnings, I feel like I can have a lot of connection with families and our students. For the last 23 years, I've been a credentialed teacher working for the juvenile justice system, La Cuesta Alta Vista, nonprofits here in town such as ICANN, which as you know, brought eight programs to Santa Barbara that has sustained itself somewhat in the district. I've taken leadership roles at the national, state, and local level. So nationally, I'm an equity coach and an Associate Chair for the National Arts Educators Association, President-elect of CAEA, and locally founder of the Association of Raza Educators. In my current role as Director of Equity and Multilingual Services, I'm very grateful to continue this amazing work that we call META. I have so many questions around META since its inception, which I was very much a part of. I feel like I'm standing on the shoulders of giants. The work that was established through META, I can see myself seeking it through, through fruition. So I'm excited about that work. I'm eager to get to know all of you and get to know our D-LAC, which is here tonight, and eager to hear from them. So thank you again. I appreciate it. Thank you.[829.45][829.45][applause]
Thank you for accepting the challenge and welcome. Next, I'd like to bring up Mr. Brett Larson, our Santa Barbara Unified Arts Coordinator. And he alerted me to the fact that our school district is one of 738 school districts that are considered the best communities in the nation for music education. The award program recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who've made music education part of a well-rounded education. So we have the designation here. And I believe, Mr. Larson, you brought some teachers with you?
I did. We brought the music teachers who aren't actually working tonight. So many, many of our music teachers are still actually teaching right now and there's events going on. But we have a few music teachers. Can you stand up?
If you could please stand, yes.
I'm just really proud of the work that our district has done. I've been in this district for 12 years. And this is our sixth year that NAM, the National Association for Music Merchants, has given us this award to our district for recognizing that we believe music education is part of a well-rounded education. And we continue to do that. So I want to thank the board for continuing that and keeping it in our thoughts. And our cabinet works very hard. I know it's not easy, you know, with keeping minutes for everybody, but we still always try and keep music and the arts in the forefront. So I want to thank you all and thank these teachers for their marvelous work. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And thank you, teachers. Yeah, if you could come up here really quick with the sign and the teachers just to stand in front of the board. We want to just do a quick opportunity face Mr. Masuda back there with the black suit. I feel like an orchestra director right now.[959.58][959.58][laughter]
Can you see us?
If the board could go ahead and stand up, that would be awesome. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, teachers. Thank you, Mr. Larson, for that wonderful recognition of our district through all of your efforts, all of your love and care for music and for our children as well. We do have a student performance. We're almost there. One last thing, I just, hot off the press, our state recognized and put out a call for pivotal practices during the pandemic. And we got exciting news today that Santa Barbara Unified has received this award of state pivotal practices, which recognizes districts that have shown innovation in their demonstrated efforts to support students in four targeted areas, student engagement, distribution of technology, nutrition services, and social-emotional well-being of students. In addition, our very own principal, Casey Kilgore Franklin Elementary, also was recognized and received the same award for her school and their focus on student engagement and social-emotional well-being of students. So we are very proud here in Santa Barbara Unified.[1036.13][1036.13][applause] Yes. You'll be hearing more about that in the coming days. So we're going to close out with a music performance by Sam Peacock, a violinist. He started playing in fourth grade at Roosevelt. Had a great music teacher. He's a junior at Santa Barbara High School. Not yet decided where he's going to do, but you know, the world is your oyster, so you can do whatever you want. But one thing for sure is he will continue to play the violin. So welcome, Sam, and thank you for being here.[1069.36][1069.36][applause]
Hello, I'm Sam and just wanted to say the piece I'll be playing for you today is called Humorous by Anton Dvorak.
Board members, I am a little overcome with emotion. Thank you so much, Sam. These are our future. These are our children. And such incredible talent is to be celebrated. And we thank you for sharing your beautiful talent with us, Sam.
Thank you for having me. This is great.[1358.86][1358.86][laughter]
Thank you. So as you can see, we're back on and we have amazing children. I have so much hope in the future because of our youth, just like Sam. With that, that ends my report to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado, and beautiful performance. My goodness. With this, we will go to the time-certain, the COVID-19 Board Report Number 39.
Just catching my breath there. Good evening, board members, President Munoz, Dr. Maldonado. It is COVID Report Number 39. Next slide, please. As you will see, the two dates that we had here, so the last reported at the board meeting, we had on Sunday, the third, we had our case for 100,000 people. It was down to 4.4. And as you could see, two weeks later, it went up to 8.5. At the moment, it seems like it was, looking at it last week, it looked like it was going up and then it sort of plateaued down, so we're keeping an eye on it. On the 13th, it was actually at 9.3. Next slide. Another key point is looking at our student positive cases. As you can see, we go from Thursday to Thursday. Last couple of weeks, you'll notice that we had, it was at 0.7%, 10 positives. And that was out of 1,500 students tested. And as you could see, from the 8th to the 14th, we had 24 positives out of 1,600 tested. So it was an increase of 1.4%. So, and this includes reentry tests as well as, you know, as we had tests from primary health and aptitude. Next slide. So with the staff, again, it increased. So we went from 2% to 2.4%. So you could see a slight increase with our cases. Still, we're not seeing what we saw that was happening with the first Omicron variant. Last, or the next slide. So what are we doing in schools? We're continuing with the testing. It's at 10% testing of all school students and staff. We also have increased supplies with our home tests. So we have not the one that you've seen before, the iHealth. We have also these new Abbott tests. So we have plenty of at-home tests. So tests for students, staff. So we are looking good there as well as making sure we have plenty of tests, the tests that we provide at the school sites as well. With that said, next slide. There is a slight change to what's happening with employees. Again, from this slide, this is if you test positive on the first day or the first day that you're showing symptoms. Up to the fifth day, you could test, on the fifth day, to see if you can return on the sixth day. If the test is negative, you can return. Or if the test is positive, you keep going up until the 11th day. The 11th day, you can return automatically without testing. So that was guidance from CDPH. One thing to know is that, here's the difference. Excuse me. The students, they're recommended to mask when they return. Staff, if they return and they return with a negative, so on day six they return, they are required to wear a mask up until 10 days. So that's the change that's occurred with Cal OSHA. So, and with that, that's what I have for you with our report.
Thank you, Mr. Vence. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on this item? Okay. Board, do you have, do you have any comments or questions? Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. Vence. Thank you for keeping up with the changes from California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA as well. And even though the rates are so low, which is great to see, I know that it's so important to remain vigilant, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And as well, we are looking at what to do during the summer and planning that out to make sure that we have that safe and continue the vigilance. So, yeah.
Okay. If there are no other comments, thank you very much.
All right.
Do you have any other comments from closed session? Did you have any comments? Pardon? Did you have any comments? Public comments? No, right? Right. Okay, so we'll go to board comments. Ms. Capps?
Well, in the spirit of correspondence, I just want to thank the advocates that we've heard from this past couple of weeks from TechWise, those who are concerned about screen times, the emails, the calls that we've had. The one meeting that I did was just so incredibly thoughtful, respectful, and well-researched, very reasonable in your approach. And I just wanted to thank you and look forward to further conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Oh, sorry, I was writing. I have several comments and several reports. I will save them at the presentation of the UTK to give an update on advocacy. I do want to remind everyone, if you're looking for something to do this weekend, we have the great production at Dos Pueblos High School of Beauty and the Beast. That's this Saturday. And also this Friday, the Royal Pride Foundation San Marcos is having their annual fundraiser. And there are still tickets available. So if you're looking for something to do and support our schools, I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. Well, first of all, as promised, I saw Chicago at Santa Barbara High School, and it was a fully standing ovation performance. It was a fantastic effort and achievement, and I just want to thank all the staff and volunteers who made this experience possible for the amazing students these evenings. Also, I just have to thank our budding virtuoso personally, Sam Peacock. He's an amazing young man and a very inspiring musician, which many of you, I think, may have felt. Santa Barbara High School and Santa Barbara Junior High gave me my musical start and fantastic education in music and theater. But in my life, I only had one violin lesson, and it was a disaster. So I do know talent and hard work when I see it. And also, I wanted to just mention that this month, Santa Barbara lost one of its stellar educators, Dr. Jules Zimmer, who started out as the Director of Early Childhood Education at UCSB, and later became the Dean of UCSB Gavert's School of Education, influencing and inspiring hundreds of new teachers. He was a leader there from 1993 to 2004. So rest in peace, Dr. Zimmer. Thank you.
And also, before we go further, I also wanted to announce that Ms. Sims-Moten is away at a pre-approved education conference this week, and therefore she's absent. Mr. Kelly? No, I'm good.
Yeah, thank you. Since the last meeting, I spoke with the student board reps from each of the three high schools, as well as the Questa, we had a meeting. Some of them that couldn't make it was recorded. And after speaking to the reps, who, one of them will fill my position, I am confident that we will have a great student board member for the next year. Also, I went to prom. It was great to go to a dance without COVID restrictions, and it's happy to return to, and I'm happy to return to some sense of normalcy and happy to see people here today. So, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Public comments on non-agenda items.
President Munoz, it looks as though we have nine public comment. So that means we can stick with our three minutes. And I'm going to call the first three, so you just have a sense of order. It's been a little while since I've done this. But first will be Ellen Hunter, followed by Laura Rhodes, followed by Dr. Sarah Nimmens. So, Ms. Hunter, you have three minutes, please, and I'll remind you at 30 seconds.
Aha, there we go. Good evening. I'm Ellen Hunter, kindergarten teacher at Monroe Elementary, and also a mother of three adult children who were in SB Unified. Tonight, I'm speaking as a concerned teacher of the effects of excessive screen time on our youngest students, whose brains, as you know, are still developing at a very rapid rate. And we know that research shows a direct correlation between screen time and brain development. Early data from a 2018 National Institute of Health study shows that children who spent more than two hours a day on screen time activities scored lower on language and thinking tests. And some children with more than seven hours a day of screen time experienced even thinning of the brain's cortex, where we know critical thinking and reasoning takes place. So researchers are hypothesizing that screens inhibit certain aspects of a child's development by narrowing their focus of interest and limiting their exploration and learning. We know that young children learn by exploring their environment and by watching adults and other children and other people around them. Excessive screen time inhibits a child's ability to observe and explore these very important everyday activities that they need to learn about their world. Language development is also very rapidly expanding during the early years. And we also know that children learn language best when they're engaging and they're interacting with adults, having conversations, talking, playing, sharing facial expressions, et cetera. Not passive listening on a device, that is one way, and that is not what is best. Now, don't get me wrong. During COVID and Zooming, we needed to provide every child with an iPad in order for them to attend school and continue their learning. But we're past that, for now, at least, knock on wood. And every young child does not need to have access to an iPad 24/7 in their home.
30 seconds.
I have had many parents ask me, and I am doing it, if they can keep their child's iPad in my classroom, as opposed to taking it home every day because they are finding it difficult to manage. It is a battle that they are having at home. Parenting is hard enough. Managing screen time is hard enough with TV, cell phone, video games, tablets. And now they've got this iPad at home that they're battling with their six-year-old. So let's help out our families. Let's eliminate taking home iPads for our youngest students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Laura Rhodes, followed by Dr. Sarah Nimmens, followed by Melissa Quigley.
Hi, my name is Laura Rhodes. I am the mom of three young kids, two of which go to Roosevelt's. And recently, the school board received a letter from TechWise SB, and that letter was signed by no less than 50 pediatricians and more than 50 psychologists, therapists, and teachers, many of which work for SB Unified. It would stand to reason that if all these experts are asking you to make a change about iPad policies, you should listen. We are asking that our youngest learners are not given individual iPads that they take on the bus, that they use unsupervised, that they can do whatever they want with. We are asking that YouTube is taken off of these iPads. By giving kids access to YouTube, the district is giving them access to pornographic and violent videos. I have to believe that isn't what the district wants for our little kids. The on-campus filters implemented by the school district have been tested by parents, and they're laughable. All of our kids can access pornography on campus with these district-provided iPads. We are asking that you give parents control over the platforms that the district is placing into the hands of our impressionable youngest children. You have a duty of care, which you are not upholding, and you are not permitting parents to uphold it either. It is unclear who is making these technology decisions and what qualifications they have to do so, but it is clear that you're not heeding the advice of experts in children's health and wellness, both mental and physical. This is gross negligence. The district says that one of their top five focuses is supportive health and wellness. Close to 100 health and wellness experts have signed this letter, calling out that the fact, calling out the fact that the district is failing in this area. So we ask you, please, take another look at this so-called equitable technology approach before more irreparable harm is done. The data is in. iPads and technology lead to anxiety and depression. Kids are committing suicide at higher rates, and there's a very, very causational trend here. So please make changes now and save our kids' future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Sarah Nimmens, followed by Melissa Quigley, followed by Susan Horn.
Hi, my name is Sarah Nimmens. I'm a pediatrician here in Santa Barbara, and I'm here to share some of my experiences that I'm seeing in the clinic with you guys. It's alarming to me that young kids are issued personal iPads that they are required to carry by the school. I'm not anti-technology, but I do not see much benefit to a four- to seven-year-old having a personal iPad outside of the classroom. In my experience, children will choose the fun option without thinking of the bigger picture. It is important for the community that is raising them to ensure that limits are set to promote success. In my practice, I have started to see devices as an addiction. Children are spending an alarming amount of time staring at screens. I worry about the quality of the time spent on the screens. More time on screens means less time in the day for important activities, such as face-to-face interaction, family time, outdoor play, exercise, and sleep. My four-year-old would play on her iPad all day if I did not take it away. She doesn't rationalize that if I spend more time watching TV, I have less time to learn how to play a sport, or become a better friend, or read a book with my mom. If not closely monitored, there's a high potential for children to abuse the device by overindulging in screen time. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that young children should co-view and co-play with an adult while on devices. I worry that inequalities will be exacerbated when one child's parent co-views and limits their screen time while another parent is unable to provide that to their child, and they're just given unlimited access. This may happen anyway, but I don't want the school to be the one supplying the device. I see a staggering amount of obesity in my clinic, and when I talk to these families about the amount of time that they're spending on screens, it's a lot. Literally, the only exercise they're getting is at PE. And I'm also seeing a lot of anxiety and depression. I see kids isolating in their rooms, and they only have online relationships, and they're missing out on opportunities to reach out to other people because when they would have the opportunity, they pull out their device. And I also worry about kids multitasking. They are on their device while they're supposed to be doing homework, and parents don't necessarily realize that they have that distraction. And so, you know, my hope is for awareness to grow about the negative consequences of screens and for there to be limits set by the community around these children. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melissa Quigley, again, followed by Susan Horn, followed by Fay Brandon Meyer.
Hello, school board members and Dr. Maldonado. My name is Melissa Quigley. I'm a school psychologist. I'm one of your employees. I'm also a parent. I'm a very concerned community member. I'm a very concerned employee. I'm very passionate about this topic of screens and kids. What I want to mention today is this idea of digital decision-making. There are options to do this in a healthy way. Here's the data that I have that's from non-industry-backed research that's related to ed tech. We do not want industry-backed research. We want non-industry-backed research. It is here. I've printed it double-sided. This is a model that a nonprofit that's not in California created. It is identifying different levels of technology use in a school district, in a school. It starts at the very top as transformative. The data is showing, and the data is continuing to emerge, but the data shows that the transformative level of technology actually has positive outcomes, and there's less risk factors. We want transformative technology. We want kids to learn amazing things that they cannot learn through a teacher. Down here, technology is labeled as restrictive or disruptive. There are many ways technology in a classroom and in a school can be disruptive and distracting. We do not want that. Down here, the different types of ed tech research show us that the technology that gets integrated down here is actually harmful. The anxiety, the depression, the social skills, the attention, the loss of focus, that happens. So what I'm asking you, what I'm asking our community, is to adopt a model and adopt a framework that we are taking into account research. We are taking into account experts. We are taking into account people outside of this room and outside of our district, and we are coming together as stakeholders. You are Santa Barbara Unified. We are Santa Barbara, California. Santa Barbara started Earth Day. We can start healthier tech in schools. We can do it now. You guys can do it. I can do it. The cabinet can do it. Let's do it. Let's make this decision. Let's set the model for the rest of our country. We can do it. I believe in you. I believe in me, and I'm not going to let this topic stop. We cannot let go of technology. We live in a technology world. We can make really great decisions. We can not only prepare our students for the world that is not yet created, we can make sure that they are safe doing so, they are happy, and they are healthy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Susan Horn, followed by Fay Brandon Meyer, followed by Brian Campbell.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Susan Horn, and I'm a health educator and a parent and a grandparent now. I came to speak to you about discussing problems with you, the board, from the community, and I have heard such great things tonight. I have just such great things to hear about, problems that can be solved and are in the process of that. And especially when problems are brought up, the best part is when it includes potential solutions, especially solutions that have research behind them and have succeeded elsewhere, evidence-based solutions. But there is a foundation that's necessary for any progress in discussions, and for any education, actually. And that foundation includes respect. I wanted to talk about what I heard last year, actually, on Zoom, and have read about their meeting last week. And my comment is that if there is bullying and mocking and shaming on any side, it amounts to intimidation. And then there's a lack of safety. And that is something that I heard since the pandemic began in public comment in front of the board. It destroys respect and any possibility for good discussion and problem solving. And I just came tonight to appeal to all those who need to hear it, all the parents and speakers who speak, especially in public comment, to build a foundation of respect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Fay Brandon Meyer, if I'm saying it. You can correct me if you'd like.
That's fine. Brent Meyer.
Brent Meyer. Thank you.
Hello. I'm a bit new to Santa Barbara, but I've checked out all your bios and a bit familiar. A few weeks ago, here at this board meeting, a pediatrician and numerous parents, and again tonight, commented on the use of their young children and screen time. And I did, I did hear a comment, I believe, that there were some discussions happening, and you look forward to further conversations about screen time in children? No? And anyway, only very few years back, I think we all would have been in agreement to limit screen time with children. That was really the direction we were going. And giving iPads to kindergarteners would have been unheard of. And what I'm hearing here already tonight is that, is that parents are asking for concrete actions. It seems like there's a lot of listening, a lot of talking back and forth. People are bringing studies forward and everything, but, but we need new guidelines. We're not just here just talking just to hear ourselves talk. We're really looking to you. We'd like to have conversations. This is, this is a huge topic, and, and I think you can't really argue that more screen time is better for children. Considering also, I was here last week, the recent racial incidences, I think one of the things is we need to look no further than the academic scores of the Black and Hispanic children relative to the white children, to know that we have completely and utterly failed these children. When we're having racial issues, these children feel terrible about themselves. And the, and the measures to address the racial tension taken by the board over the years and of recent are alarming. We weren't even allowed to name what it was that was the most recent action that was taken to help with the racial incidences. And all of these are things that parents are seeing as red flags. So I came to the first open to the public meeting in two years, a few weeks ago, with a prepared statement, and there were so many flowery words spoken about how happy board members were to be back in the board meetings again, and the wonderful parent relations and community. And I sat there with my comment in my hand and glanced back at the other parents, and I was wondering if I was in the wrong meeting. And I just wanted to say that how could this be a board meeting for a county that's 50th in the country for literacy, a county where multiple racial incidences took place with very young students? Where, where was the intent to improve on this? I didn't hear any of that. Then the parents approached the podium, and the reality set in. However, the pleas of the parents were met with of the parents were met with disregard. Traditionally, board, board members of non-corporate entities are not paid. None of the parents gathered here who have done extensive research on their own, discussed the issues with others, and show up consistently to these meetings.
You'll need to conclude.
Furthermore, it does not appear that the concerns they have raised have been met with any consideration or positive outcomes.
Thank you.
That's what we need.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Brian Campbell, followed by Danny Blanc.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I noticed earlier you allowed clapping for programs that you've implemented, but last week, you admonished clapping for items that you didn't like. Hmm, another double standard. The administration boards say they're following the science and data, but in two years, they have been unable or unwilling to produce any official CDC or FDA data. They've only produced CNN news pieces and opinion-based articles. Per the FDA fact sheet posted on the FDA's website, and the handout disclosures that doctors send out, myocarditis and pericarditis risk is higher among males under 40 years of age. The highest risk is in males 12 to 17 years of age after receiving the COVID vaccine. Despite this FDA disclosure stating that school-aged boys are the highest risk, board members like Ms. Capps states that she supports COVID vaccination clinics on school grounds. Is she going to start giving out cigarettes and vape pens on school grounds next? Per the CDC data, children have a 99.999% healthy outcome from COVID. So let's put that into perspective. Per the CDC numbers, 583 people under the age of 18 died each year with COVID. Per the CDC and National Highway Safety Institute in the year 2019, 1,053 children under the age of 14 died in car accidents, almost double that of COVID. Every child's death is a tragedy, but do you still drive with your kids in the car? Yes, you do, despite twice as many children dying in cars than from COVID. This district does not follow CDC and SP public health guidelines to a T. This was evidenced by their mandating outdoor masks and continually trying to force vaccinations upon elementary children, such as they tried at Washington Elementary this year. The principal stated she was told by the board that children were required to be vaccinated. Then the board blamed the principal. That principal has since resigned. Is it just me, or do these adults act like children pointing fingers and tattletaling on each other? So what science and data are they following? They're following the money. $35 million in COVID relief funds, and per the Carpenteria School Board, Governor Gavin Newsom has threatened to take away any and all state funding if they do not comply with COVID mandates. In July 2020, the CDC said kids are safer in schools, but the district and teachers' union chose to close schools anyway, despite the district receiving COVID relief funds and donations. The end result is a 51% increase in teen suicides. The administration and their policies are harming the children. But then again, taking a look at the academic history and all the failed policies, this board hasn't really shown any affect affection or love towards the children or their future.
Our last speaker, President Muñoz, will be Danny Blanc.
Good evening. I wish, I wish I was coming here to say thank you for the amazing job you did for my daughter, that every time I came to speak here, that I felt heard, but not, that's not true. I'm coming here because I'm very disappointed and frustrated with this board. I have, I'm a single mom of two children. I came from a third world country because I believe in American dream, freedom, and no corruption. I run for corruption. And what I find now, we don't have American dreams. We have no freedom, and there is a lot of corruption. It's all about money. All about money, and our kids are suffering. I have a daughter, 16-year-old, who has extreme anxiety. I pulled her out of the school because I didn't accept the mask. She felt anxious. She could not breathe. She failed Zoom when it was Zoom time, and then she didn't want to go back. Now I suffer with her having depression because she's isolated from her friends. I have a 14 that I wish I could pull him out too, because I'm not agreeing with everything that's being taught by, by the, the school. But I don't want him to have the same issue that she has, because the mental illness is very, very a problem, a problem in this country right now. There is people talking about. There is a lot of suicides. So I'm trying to protect my kids. And I write something today that I think should be the base. First, our current system, it is harming our children. It harmed my daughter. I feel I was harmed because I didn't want her to use the mask. I didn't want her to be tested, and I don't want her to have experimental shots. That is experimental. It's not, it's not yet fully accepted or, you know, anyway. Our current system is harming our children. Children should be taught to love our country, not hate it. Children should be given the talk, like sexual talk, by their parents, not by their teachers. Children should be taught that we are all created equal, not critical race theory. We see a lot of incidents. I grew up, I didn't know. I think everybody is the same. Everybody is red inside, and that's the most valuable thing. And now I see all this critical race theory being taught to my kids, and I do not agree with it. And I also like more curriculum transparency, because I know there is been, there is things being taught that parents, we don't know. So thank you for your attention. I wish I could be saying thank you for all the time you heard me before. Thank you.
Thank you. President Muñoz concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Capps.
We will now move to the discussion agenda, number two, the response to racial incidents report.
Thank you so much, President Muñoz. As we discussed in the past, we really are looking at combating some of the racism that we see in our schools and some of the behaviors that we want to make sure that our children improve upon and our staff in terms of addressing the sense of a lack of belonging that our principal so eloquently spoke about. And so if we can get our PowerPoint up, since we last spoke, we'll go to the next slide. We have had a report of five racial incidents across five schools between April 8th and April 22nd. Most of these incidents continue to be name-calling and using, inappropriately using the N-word with our students. Students both that do the acts and receive the acts are being counseled appropriately by their, their school principals, and we're working with, with everyone that's involved to remedy those situations. Next slide. Last week, I had an opportunity to convene the Anti-Blackness Working Group, and there's an intentionality to the use of the word anti-blackness, which is a word that really looks at the dehumanizing of people based on their skin color and systemic policies that have existed in our country that lead to lack of opportunities and such. There were 45 members that attended this meeting comprised of parents, employees, community members, and two of our board members, President Muñoz and Board Member Sims Moten. And to begin with, we discussed the board's erection on conducting a racial climate assessment at every single one of our schools, and we began with really asking ourselves, what are some of the qualifications that we would look for in hiring someone that would come to communities such as Santa Barbara that is diverse and has, in many ways, we are sort of geographically, in many ways, not as easily connected to extended communities. And these are some of the qualifications that were rated as things that we would want to see in the group that we bring forward to do this work with our school district. You'll notice that many of the members that were there really wanted us to look at organizations that have a history of working in K-12 school systems. So we know that out there in the industry, there are people that do this work in corporate America, that, that do work with private businesses and so on. They really want us to work with someone that's going to have that kind of experience. They want someone that can really establish a district-wide protocol for reporting, investing, tracking restorative resolutions and practices, people that have lived or learned experiences in this area, that have independence from ultimate services. They really felt strongly that they wanted us to bring an outside agency outside of Santa Barbara Unified, but that has the ability to really convene the community and get input from our community so that we can get a very objective point of view from this work. And then, of course, someone that will be able to look at our core curriculum and identify how it can be improved to affect positive change. So these are the top qualifications that they brought forward. We will be looking to contract with someone to come and do that work in the coming days and weeks. Next slide. Here are just some of the, some of the comments. We asked people to just, you know, assess our, our working group and, and really hold ourselves accountable. Are we doing and moving in the right direction? This is a, an effort that I have agreed to take on with the intentionality of having it be work that's done in community and in collaboration with others, because we recognize as a school district that as we work with community, we want to hear from them on our progress. And you can, I won't read them to you. You can read them yourselves here. And our last slide. Last week, or last meeting, I reported that we really wanted to complete anti-bias training for all staff by June 30th, but after having listened to the working group, looking at some of the qualifications that they're looking at, having Dr. Beckio bring forward some recommendations, I realized that a lot of this work is still geared very much, like I said earlier, to corporate America-type diversity training. And so we really want to take a little bit more time to get the right fit in terms of what our annual anti-bias training will look like for employees. So to that end, I'm asking us to pause and really identify a company that'll be able to provide that specific annual training that'll be ongoing for us. And again, the rest of these pieces, you can see that some are continuing to be in progress. The request for proposals will not happen until after we have the results of the racial climate assessment, and our next meeting will be next Wednesday. So thank you, and I will turn it back to you for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Yes, for, we'll take some time for public comments.
Okay, we just have one speaker on this agenda item, and that is Brian Campbell.
Evening again. For almost two decades, the district has spent over $1 million of taxpayers' money to pay just communities for quote-unquote "ethnic studies" which occurred behind closed doors. Teachers, parents, and white kids were not allowed to participate in these ethnic study programs that we were told were to help the children understand each other and help them get along. They purposely excluded the white kids from that quote-unquote "education." They were not inclusive or equitable. They divided the kids based upon skin color. In fact, they teach resentment towards race or classes of people. Per the definition of racism, that is textbook racism. The district labeled it as anti-racism, and yet another gimmick to make you believe they actually cared about equality. Well, guess what? It's racism by definition, teaching to hate a certain class of people based upon skin color and culture. Fast forward to this year, 12 racial incidents in three weeks. Well, that's what the board said last week. This week, it's five incidents. Hispanic kids kneeling on the back of Black kids stating George Floyd, the N-word. Another kid making a video of Black kids dancing to the sounds of music. This district has shown its true goal, which is to divide the children based upon skin color and economics. The sad truth is the district purposely holds back children of color and refuses to educate all the children equally. Look at the star results. Our Hispanic community is failing. They have been failing for years and putting our children in danger of racism-driven bullying with their unethical and immoral practices. Instead of lifting children up, they knock them down, and they hold them down. Parents have been asking for years to change this curriculum from just communities and this style of racial quote-unquote "education." At the last meeting, Wendy Sims Moten got upset at me because I asked what qualifications Coffee would a Black guy has. He has a journalism degree. He's not a psychologist. He's not trained to counsel children. So why did Ms. Sims Moten get upset? Maybe she has a relationship with this guy. Maybe he's a client of her consulting company. All I know is they hired a guy without any, any credentials, and they paid him $1,800 per hour despite his having no qualifications. The district has shown they are willing to spend our hard-earned taxpayer dollars on unsuccessful programs that hurt our children. I urge all of our parents and our community to ask questions and vote differently. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. President Muñoz.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Maldonado, for your report on, on this important issue. I'd like to start. I know certainly Ms. Sims Moten and I were honored to be present and participate in the working group. We appreciated Dr. Maldonado facilitating it and having everyone participate in, in small groups so that we had some good conversations. We had groups of four, which were very helpful, and appreciated, you know, so many community members that came from different walks of life, taking time to share their thoughts with us, their candor, and engaging with us about these conversations. It was a beginning of this, and, you know, it's a community-based effort, which we know will be fruitful. So thank you so much to those that participated and shared with us, and we're looking forward to the meetings that are going to be coming up also. Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you, Ms. Muñoz, for that report, and thank you for being part of that group. I really appreciate that. And Dr. Maldonado, on slide number three, you are giving us a summary or bullet points here of the qualifications that we are looking for to hire this firm to do a climate assessment. I want to make sure that we cast a very wide net for this firm that, that we are looking for, and that it's made as public as possible, that is brought to the board, so everybody knows who's being considered and how that person or that firm is going to be selected. So I'd like to make sure that that happens. And also, I really appreciate giving the reports, an updated report at every board meeting, so thank you.
Ms. Capps?
Yes, thank you for the report, and it sounds like it was a very, I just kind of want to get a better feel for the meeting, if that's possible. It sounds like it was a very conducive environment and collaborative, and, and the decision, I want to understand better, the decision to hire a consultant, just because it sounds like that there was consensus behind that. But sometimes that raises a question for me, because it's sort of, you can delay things that way, and then you don't have as quick of action because, you know, just the process it takes to hire an outsider, and then they have to orient them and all that. I just want to get a sense, was that across the board, the recommendation?
For the outside consultant versus in Santa Barbara?
Yes.
What we did is we engaged in a protocol for decision-making that I've used in running working groups in my previous experience.
Yep.
And through that protocol, the, every single one of the participants in groups of four had a chance to come up with their list, present their list to each other as a group, and then they had an opportunity to vote on the top, their top three choices. And through the voting of their top three choices is the list that I gave you here as the top most desired qualifications from the group. So it was a group decision.
Okay.
And that included that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm just looking for a bit more of the, of the excitement or the, you know, was this a, it sounds like there was a fair amount of consensus, just because one could argue that somebody coming from the outside wouldn't, it would take a while to, I just am thinking about time and understanding sort of the, the sense of urgency that we all feel, but also understanding trying to do it right. And it seems like the group, the working group, is more focused on getting it right than just sort of more knee-jerk reactions. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that the prevailing thinking in the room was that it would benefit Santa Barbara to have an outsider's perspective with the intention, like I said earlier, that they would be able to quickly come in and assess our culture, and that we would look to some of the members of the group to also help orient that work. But I would think, I would characterize it as the prevailing thinking of the group that having an outside beyond Santa Barbara would better serve us as a community. And that would be to the detriment, as you say, of the urgency, but it's, it was important for everyone that was present that we got this part right, because we realized that we're dealing with something that's we're dealing with something that's generational, that's, that has existed for many years, and we don't want to act so quickly that we may miss, make missteps along the way. This is really important work that clearly has, you know, polar opinions, so we want to get it right.
Thank you for elaborating. That's it.
Yes, and I would just add to that, that we felt like the anti, as a group, we spoke about the anti-bias training being part of having the consultant do that to address the needs of our district, so that it's not something separate that, you know, folks just go in and check off the boxes, but that's something is well thought out for our district too. Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. I do want to point out that just because of the Board, Brown Act, that only two board members could be at that meeting, I'm hoping perhaps I can attend one in the future, but I'm really glad to hear about the progress and the efforts that are made. I'd like to know, and I appreciate the pausing that's happening on the training and the contract, I was wondering, do you have some sort of a set of timeframe in mind now, even though we're paused? How soon would you like to get this all underway?
That's an excellent question, and when you're working with engaging stakeholders, it does slow down things a bit. I'm hoping that by the fall, we will be able to have something in place in terms of beginnings of the racial climate assessments, and then maybe mid-year, looking at some of the training we may be able to do with our employees.
Yes?
Yes. I would just like to say thank you for making this a reoccurring item and time-sensitive item and getting community input, because this issue needs to be addressed with the community, with the community's input in mind. So thank you for that.
Okay, so we will go on to, at this time, to the consent agenda. To approve the items that... Pardon? Okay. To approve the items that are considered routine and not likely to require any discussion, Dr. Maldonado and her staff have recommended that the board approves all the consent agenda items. The board has also had an opportunity to consider and ask questions about these items before tonight. And Dr. Maldonado, you'd like to add something?
Yes. Board members, I'd like to pull item number seven, the annual approval of annual purchase of student and staff devices. There are some questions that our staff did not get a chance to completely respond to, and some additional information that we really feel that is important to bring to the board before you, we ask you to make this decision. So with that, I'm pulling item number seven.
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
I apologize, I didn't have a chance to ask my questions in advance, but I do have some questions on some of the items. I think, so however, however you want, do you want to do public comment first and then my questions? Do you want to do that? Okay. We have no public comment.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Alvarez, there are not any public comments on this.
Sure. Would you, Ms. Hernandez or Dr. Maldonado, would you explain the reason why we're using Fund One for this facilities projects and not other fund related to facilities? Yeah, we are using them for the repairs and the replacements that are in the consent agenda. It says, I believe, it's restricted routine maintenance, a Fund One.
We're using the regular routine maintenance fund for all of those items. They're all items that are of need of repair, so we're using those funds for that.
And would you please explain to us why, how's it determined which fund we're going to use versus Fund One or developer fees? That was a question that was asked of me yesterday, and it'd be good for me to hear it from you.
So in general, anything that is kind of, kind of regular maintenance kind of things, like, you know, a hole in a ceiling that you want to fix, those kinds of things, we do have money that's set aside for those kinds of regular maintenance. So that's what a lot of these items are. We also do have developer fees. They're just kind of two different buckets of money, and depending on what it is, we can, if it's an item that's not necessarily fixing a hole in the ceiling, but maybe you're going to be doing kind of, you know, extra carpeting or other things that are, items that need to be done, but are not so clearly regular maintenance, deferred maintenance kind of things, then we usually tend to use developer fees.
Thank you. So this money was already set aside for this type of repairs?
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I do have another question about the FOS quote. I think that's number six. I don't know who would be, is here? Okay, thank you. Is this quote, it sounds that it's for preschool students only, and could you give us a little bit of insight how it was determined to use the FOS? Is that because we're already using FOS, or is there, was there a comparison to other programs out there?
So we are, as you know, already using FOS in TK through six, and there was a lot of interest for that continuity. And because the FOS curriculum is linked to our designated ELD design, we have the unique opportunity to work with the Lawrence Hall of Science and have them develop preschool English language development. And the teachers were asking for it, so on May, on March 7th, they actually had a training done by FOS as part of their pupil-free day for preschool. And the great thing about having the English language development linked to the FOS is that it's best to come to and from content, and it's hands-on, and it's engaging, and there was so much breadth to it that there's no way in a TK class, they are going to complete all of those units. So the next question I think you'll have, and what we will do, and I'll tell you in advance, is we'll really scope those out so that there are multiple opportunities for the kids to have that hands-on experience, and then they're not stepping over the next grade-level teacher's curriculum as well. But we also know that kids need to see things more than once, and so if they have the chance to, you know, play with the water or the wind and figure out how the world around us works while also increasing their oral language, we believe this is a win. It also is supportive of our preschools that are in our schools. So there's that continuity of routines, and of course, the English language development piece that is just unprecedented.
And this is actual books? It's, I know we've talked a lot about digital and street times.
The FOS kit is a, it's a big black and white box. Teachers are excited when they get it, and they think, where am I going to put it? But when you unpack that box, there are tons of hands-on curriculum. There's also independent little readers for the kids. They also have a digital component. It has been vetted by our ETS department. That contains videos, practice problems, but that's really towards more of your fifth and your eighth, you know, those that will be tested on that.
Great, thank you. And final question, is this already in the budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, board members, if there aren't any further questions, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Ford?
Thanks. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in items E2 through E24 minus number seven, which was pulled by Dr. Maldonado.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Okay, we will now go to the action agenda. Number one, the notice of proposed secondary English language adoption curriculum. We should have just gone, right?
All right. Good evening, President Munoz, board, Superintendent Dr. Maldonado, cabinet, and our community. I am here tonight to talk to you about supporting our emergent multilingual students and the teachers who work so diligently every day to ensure that they have access to the curriculum that they deserve. As you recall from our last board meeting, we talked about our EML profiles, emergent multilingual profiles, and that there's two types of EMLs, those that have been in our system for less than six years, and those that have been there longer than six years. And we call those long-term ELs. Well, all of our emergent multilingual students are not a monolith. They have different needs, and as such, we need to have different supports for them. Additionally, you'll recall Superintendent Dr. Maldonado talking about her listening tours and what she heard from teachers. We have heard from our teachers and our leaders that there is a need to really up our English language development in the secondary classroom spaces. When you think of the English language framework, the first side is about making meaning, and we are able to do that with our current curriculum, which is called IRWIC, Expository Reading Writing Curriculum. But that second side, and I'm doing this because I'm visualizing the place cards that we give teachers, is about how English language development works and those foundational skills. That's where a big part of our opportunity is, is how English works, because it's different, as we all know, and then those foundational skills. So after seeing the profile and sharing the data with you, hearing from our teachers and our leaders, we are here tonight to fast-track what we think is important field test of curriculum. I want to thank our new director, Anna Pilhofer, who you met tonight, and Tricia Palestra for looking at this curriculum with a keen eye and a rubric to vet. They made sure that it had differentiation for the language proficiencies. You'll remember that profile that was up there, eight different ways to achieve proficiency, foundational literacy skills, assessment continuum that had summative and formative, had primary language support, newcomer support, and of course, was culturally responsive, relevant, and engaging. Topics that would give students a chance to prove their agency and had both hard copy and digital components. With that in mind, we selected, with the team, we met with the English cadre, that's what we call the teachers of those teams, and we would like to fast-track three curricula. The first is I-LIT. It is by Savas, the same one that you approved for our social studies. And the second is National Geographic. This has proven to be something that kids really enjoy, young adults, and we probably still read it ourselves, but it also has a lot of foundational academic language and scaffolded supports. And the third is Study Sync. This is what I would call a sophisticated English language development that honors the age group of our high school students and our long-term ELs. So we are here tonight to ask that you allow us to field-test these in our classes, starting as soon as we can get them, and that we simultaneously open the 30-day window. The 30-day window means that we'll have the materials available to the public upstairs, and they can come in and comment about them. Then I will be bringing back to you a full report on what the teachers have said, what the public has said, and hopefully, a formal request for adoption of these materials so that they are in the hands of teachers by August, so that they can have professional learning around these materials and time to plan so that we hit the ground running for our EMLs.
Thank you, Ms. Lockridge. Do we have public comment? Okay, I'm seeing that we do not. Ms. Alvarez?
Well, first of all, for bringing this forward, and as you know, this has been something that I've been constantly asking about, so thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pilhofer, for hitting the ground running, and thank you so much for doing this. I do have some questions, some clarity, I need to have some clarity of mind. The ELD cadre, tell me more about that. What is it? Who are they?
So it is a professional learning community of teachers that teach either the ALD, the Academic Language Class, or English Support. So it is a PLC from across sites that meets regularly either with myself or Sean Carey, Anna Pilhofer, and when we get a new secondary emergent multilingual specialist, they will help facilitate as well. But it's a cross-site teacher PLC is what it is.
Okay, thank you. And will this notices be posted where interested parties can come and review the material? That would be really good to know. And also, what other curriculum was considered before you made the recommendation of this three? And you don't have to give me every single name, I'd just like to know that you actually made a comparison so that the public is well informed, that you're doing your due diligence.
Yes, thank you. And first, in regards to the posting, we will have a parent square that will go out announcing that they can be viewed here and where the digital access can be viewed as well. In terms of the curriculum, we looked at quite a few and used the rubric that I kind of alluded to in the beginning to narrow it down to these three. What we did is we tapped a lot of the vendors that we do work with and asked, what do you have? And there were some things that people sent that were like, we already know, that's not going to be a good fit. So when we would be recommending things that we'd already tried or that weren't working, like English 3D or Read 180, which we have had experience it with, and realized that that wasn't the right approach for our students, to really respect who they are and what they already bring to the classroom. So we narrowed it down, I can't say the total number, but I certainly could get that to you, down to these three.
Okay, great, thank you. And of course, would you give us a little bit of insight about the teacher training that will be available for this implementation if this was to be chosen?
So we would have, so after the 30-day window, we would be right at the timeline where we could offer them some discrete time in June. We, as you know, are preparing for summer school, very excited about summer school, on the sixth and the seventh, but we have the eighth, ninth, and tenth kind of reserved for discrete learning opportunities. And so since this group has a need, we would invite them in. And then we're simultaneously planning for not only that, but our Leadership Institute in June and the big formal certificated institute in August. So we would have offerings for them. And what we've heard from teachers is that it's very important to have that, you know, an inspirational keynote that gets us all excited, but that we also have some processing time. And so the day would be designed where, let's say it's National Geographic, we would have the vendor in, kind of show the routine, and then people like Tricia Palestra or Anna Pilhofer or myself would facilitate the end of that day with teacher planning time. Because you don't want to just get all pumped up and then not be able to implement it. The best professional learning is when you have a chance to actually incorporate that into your practice.
Agreed. Thank you very much. I'm look forward to seeing all the materials, too. Thank you upstairs.
I'll rush over. Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. Two reasons for me to be very grateful to you for all of this work. One is that it's clearly been well thought out, and I really love the focus on LTOs and what we have seen throughout the country, and we saw in Los Angeles, that was that academic language is what these kids really need in order to be successful in school. So thank you so much for picking materials, to you and the group, for picking materials that seem to be focused on that. Also, I just want to appreciate you for the very comprehensive and detailed narrative that came along with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Yes, any other comments from others? Okay, thank you, Ms. Lockridge. I appreciate the explanation that you gave and the terms that you used so that it's, everyone could understand it, including myself.
My pleasure. I look forward to bringing it back.
Thank you. Board members, do we have a motion? Okay, Ms. Ford?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the notice of adoption process and opening of 30-day window for public review, May 1st through the 30th, 2022.
Can I second?
Okay, board members, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now go to number two, approval of the Assembly Bill 841, Cal-Sheep Program.
Good evening, President Munoz and board members. Try that again. All right, there you go. Good evening, President Munoz and board members. It is wonderful to present to you in person this eve- It is wonderful to present to you in person this evening. And I am presenting a resolution to determine whether the board would like to accept a $418,737.60 grant from the State of California Assembly Bill 841, the California Schools Healthy Air Plumbing and Efficiency Program, also known as Cow Shape. I first presented this grant during the February 22nd board meeting, and I am delighted to inform the board that we were awarded the grant. This grant will cover seven schools. We have Cleveland, Franklin, Harding, McKinley, Montgomery Jr., Santa Barbara Jr., and Santa Barbara Community Academy. So the grant is going to pay for the assessment and maintenance of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC units, as well as any sort of maintenance associated with it, purchase new air filters, and then also carbon dioxide monitors in the classroom. While this round of funding will not pay for the replacement of HVAC units, it is actually going to inform the state on the needs of school districts around the whole state. And then it will also provide us with valuable information that we can submit to the state later on, should there be later rounds of funding for HVAC replacements. But by signing this resolution, it will allow SB Unified to accept the grant and for facilities to submit a request for proposal for the work detailed by the grant. So after the request for proposal is complete, we'll bring that information to the board for approval before awarding a contract. So thank you very much for your time. I'd like to keep this short, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Okay, there's no public comment on this item? And thank you so much, Ms. Capes.
Thank you, thank you so much, Jasmine. I think this is the first time we've been asked to approve a grant from the state of that level like this, so thank you. It's easy, not a tough call to make that motion. But I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just in terms of the choice of schools. Was that the state's choice? Was that, how did that, how did that come about, those seven schools?
Sure. So that, basically, the state uses the Cow and Viral Screen 3.0, which is like a screening tool. And then based on that, they determine the eligibility. So these were the schools that were eligible. However, I have learned recently that since the funds were not used up as much as they thought it was going to be, they are kind of loosening the eligibility criteria. So they will be expanding, allowing, I think, additional schools to apply for this. So I will try to see if I can hop on some more rooftops and find out more HVAC units to see if we can apply for more grants.
That'd be great, because of course, that's kind of the nature of my question is, how can we take this assessment, what we learn at these seven schools, and apply it elsewhere? If, again, I definitely don't know much about HVAC systems, but if you could elaborate a little bit about eligibility and if that, if you see that as a path forward, that these assessments might be utilized across the entire district.
Yeah, so the eligibility criteria is kind of frustrating. For instance, Santa Barbara High School is not eligible. Literally, the armory across the street is, because of how they draw the lines.
Okay.
So I've told the representatives from the state, like, for instance, a lot of students that go to Santa Barbara High live in those areas that are considered eligible. So shouldn't you, shouldn't the facility be also eligible for that same reason? So they're going to take that into consideration. And in terms of how we can apply the rest of, or what we're learning from this assessment, in a separate program that I'm doing with the Southern California Regional Energy Network, we've also been assessing all three of the high schools because they are our highest energy users. Since the state can't give us funding for that right now, I'm going through a different avenue to kind of pursue our highest energy users and see where we can get money to replace HVAC units or do maintenance that way.
Great. So if you could just, my last question is if you could just elaborate and give like a tangible example of what you anticipate this assessment would produce and the changes that would be made after that?
Sure. So what they're going to look at is they're going to look at each of the HVAC units to see how close they are to the end of life. So every unit has some sort of service life. And if a lot of our units are, for instance, near or past service life, then it informs the state that, look, this Santa Barbara Unified is going to need $1.2 million, I'm just making up a random number here, of funding in order to replace a lot of their aging HVAC units. So, and they do this across the entire state, then the state can determine exactly how much money they should allocate for future rounds of funding. So that's the primary assessment. And then should there be any sort of maintenance that could be done at the time, they would basically have, we would have the contractor do the same thing as well.
Thank you so much. You're already doing what we hoped this position would do, which is to save us money. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further comments, can we have a motion to approve this item?
I move that we accept the grant from the state very gratefully and happily. Thank you.
May 2nd.
Okay, board members, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. We are going to go on to the Approval of a Resolution 2021-22-27, Recognizing Certificated Classified Management and Other Education Professionals of Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Thank you, and good evening, Board President Munoz, Board Members, Superintendent Maldonado. I stand before you with two important leaders behind me, important leaders in our district. Joyce Adriensen, our president of the SBT-A, our Teachers Association, and Ken Rivas, our president of the California School Employees Association, Local Chapter 37. We stand here together, the three of us, with a really deep, deep common interest, and that is the well-being of our employees. And what we bring before you today is, at the end of April, which is a fastly approaching May, a resolution to express this board's and all of our appreciation for our employees. As you may be aware, each year in May, we spend a better part of May with different activities at schools and district to appreciate employees, all different types of employees, some of which are included in this resolution. And so prior to the month of May, we wanted to step before you together and bring this resolution for you to adopt in advance of the month of May where we will express our appreciation for what is our greatest asset as an organization, which is our employees. So with that, I'd like to respectfully request that, I know the board is interested in reading through, rotating through and reading the resolution one by one as board members. And I would also like to request that our SBT-A and CSEA presidents be able to get into that rotation and also read through the resolution with you.
Excellent. I will go ahead and start. Whereas certificated classified management and other educational professionals provide valuable service to the students of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and?
Whereas certificated classified management and other education professionals contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive and productive instructional environment, and?
Whereas certificated classified management and other education professionals serve a vital role in providing for the welfare, safety, and educational needs of Santa Barbara Unified School District students, and?
Whereas certificated classified management and other education professionals employed by the Santa Barbara Unified School District strive for excellence in all areas relative to the educational community, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares May 1st, 2022 as Principals' Day in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares the week of May 2 through 6, 2022 as National Teacher Appreciation Week in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares the week of May 2nd through 6, 2022 as School Nutrition Employees Week in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares May 3rd, 2022 as National Teacher Appreciation Day in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares May 6th, 2022 as School Lunch Hero Day in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, recognizing the difference school nutrition professionals make for every child by preparing healthy meals for students, adhering to strict nutrition standards, navigating student food allergies, and offering service with a smile, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares May 11, 2022 as California Day of the Teacher in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Day of the Teacher arose out of legislation co-sponsored by the California Teachers Association and the Association of Mexican-American Educators. Senator Joseph Montoya wrote the bill, and it was adopted in 1982. California has patterned its celebration after the traditional El Dia del Maestro festivities observed in Mexico and other Latin American countries, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares May 11, 2022 as National School Nurse Day in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares the week of May 15 through 21st, 2022 as Classified School Employee Week in the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and?
Whereas the Board of Education declares May 18, 2022 as National Speech Pathologist Day in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. In 2010, the United States declared May 18 National Speech Pathologist Day, and?
Whereas all employees of Santa Barbara Unified School District answer the call to action and serve the community by opening schools adapting to pandemic restrictions, supporting students and families, even while also experiencing the pandemic in their own personal lives, and?
Therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Barbara Unified School District hereby recognizes and wishes to honor the contribution of the certificated and classified professionals to quality education in the state of California and in the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Yeah, any public comments? No? Okay. Board members, any comments? Okay, Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. I just want to say that I'm so glad this is before us. As we all know, May is absolutely the busiest time for school employees, and it's a time when their achievements and contributions are really on display in particular. And I also just wanted to mention that since May 1st is a Sunday, I'm hoping that we can also find a time to celebrate our principles, perhaps on Monday, May 2nd. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
It is a great honor, pleasure to serve in this role as board member and also as a former SB Unified employee. I've seen the hard work that goes behind the scenes by our classified employees, by our teachers, our admin, our superintendent, and everyone that makes this possible every single day. Teachers show up with a smile, show up to support those students, the classified members. And the most important thing is for the students to feel that they belong, that we're there to support them, we're there to make sure that they get a good education and that they feel that they belong. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much to you both for your leadership, and thank you to all of our employees. You make SB Unified a great place, and we appreciate you.
Ms. Capes?
I want to thank the authors of this resolution for how specific it is. I really enjoyed the reading and just to stop and pause and think about each of these jobs. And I hope that this will carry forward throughout May and for each of those employees, because they really do such different work, different jobs, all, each and every person. But yet, the one unifying is that every single person has chosen to work with our children. And that's what brings us all together. Thank you.
Yes, and just honored to, you know, be part of this, be part of this district, the resolution. Certainly, I had the honor of having my daughters attend schools in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And I also agree with Ms. Capes, the specifics. We look at nutrition, safety, facilities, sustainability, you know, we could go on and on. So thank you so much for what everyone does and the representation for our employees. Oh, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I'm grateful for this resolution, and I love the idea of having both of you read it with us. I thought that was a great touch. Yeah.
Okay, may I have a motion on this item? Ms. Alvarez?
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-22-27, Recognizing May as Employee Appreciation Month, Santa Barbara Unified School District.
May 2nd. Okay, Ms. Capes, thank you. And all board members, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you. Time to celebrate. Go ahead and go to the appeals. Number four?
On item four, I make the motion to approve the inter-district transfer appeal for 2021-2022 school year education, I don't have to read the education code, but case number 202122-T15.
I second.
Okay, board members, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye, passes unanimously. Number five, Ms. Capes?
On item number five, I make the motion to approve, make sure I have the right one here. Yes. A motion to approve inter-district transfer appeal for the 2021-2022 school year, case number 202122-T16.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And item number six, I make the motion to approve the inter-district transfer appeal for this school year, case number 202122-T17.
And I second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes unanimously.
Item number seven, I make the motion to approve the inter-district transfer appeal for this school year, case number 202122-T18.
And I second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes unanimously.
And item number eight, I make the motion to approve the inter-district transfer appeal for this school year, case number 202122-T19.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously.
And item number nine, I make the motion to approve the inter-district transfer appeal for this school year, case number 202122-T20.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes unanimously.
Item number 10, I make the motion to approve the inter-district transfer appeal for this school year, case number 202122-T21.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 And to continue further on with board action, on item 11, I make the motion to approve Student Discipline, case number 202122-26.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes unanimously.
And in item number 12, I make the motion to approve Student Discipline, case number 202122-29.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you.
And last one, I make the motion to approve Student Discipline in the case number 202122-27.
Second.
Okay, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Capes. We made it through. Okay, so now we will go to item three on the discussion agenda, District English Learner Advisory Committee Recommendations.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Board President Munoz and Superintendent Dr. Maldonado. The district's English Learner Advisory Committee, or DILAC, is a key partner on ensuring that our emergent multilingual learners are successful. We are honored tonight to hear their annual report and to tell us a little bit more about it. We will hand it off to Alejandra Gutierrez, our Family Engagement Unit Lead. But before we hand it off to Alejandra, we're going to say this message in Espanol, and I'm going to hand it off. and I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Carrie.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary, Ms. Escobedo. And good evening to all of you. The District English Learner Advisory Committee, or also known as D-LAC, is a key partner to guarantee that our English learners, our multilingual emergent students are successful and we feel honored to listen to their annual report this evening. And with that, I will introduce Ms. Alejandra Gutiérrez.
Good evening. My name is Alejandra Gutiérrez. I'm the lead for the Family Engagement Unit. Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alejandra Gutiérrez y soy la líder de los enlaces familiar. This evening, you will hear from my colleague, Rocío Pacheco, who has been leading the D-LAC Committee on their annual recommendations.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Before I begin, I just wanted to let everybody know that our next presentation will be entirely in Spanish and I wanted to give everyone a chance. If you don't speak Spanish and you need interpretation, just please raise your hand and we will bring you a device for interpretation. You could raise your hand. Looks like everyone's ready. Okay?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Maldonado. My name is Rocío and I am one of the Family Engagement Liaisons for the District. And this evening, as in previous years, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, known as the D-LAC, has prepared their recommendations for the board. First of all, I would like to recognize and appreciate because they have dedicated quite a few evenings and hours of their time and during their time in preparation for this meeting, the committee listened to a lot of district presentations and they asked a lot of questions and they learned quite a bit to be able to come up with these recommendations. And a lot of them are aligned to the district goals, which are centered on students. The D-LAC, as an advisory committee with the legal responsibility to represent emergent multilingual students, has the responsibility to review and recommend ideas for the local Control Accountability Plan, known as LCAP. And for this reason, the committee prepares their recommendations after reviewing the LCAP. And also, they review the information and they provide their recommendations. Next slide. This presentation will be presented in three parts. First, appreciation and acknowledgements for staff. Number two, achievements for the work done, and three, recommendations. Next slide. Here, we can see the names of the parents and families that participated in developing this presentation. At the top, we have the names of our executive committee for the D-LAC and then at the bottom, we have the ELAC representatives that joined the group. I want to take a moment to ask those that are part of this group to please stand. We would like to recognize you. Thank you very much. You may be seated. And now, I will hand it over to our four presenters for the evening. Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Maldonado. My name is Marina Zarate. I am a parent of two students at San Marcos High School and I am also one of the previous co-presidents of the D-LAC. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you.
Good evening. My name is Manuela Fierros and I have two children, one at Kiefland and one at Adams, and I am the D-LAC parliamentarian and it's a pleasure to be here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Socorro Ramírez and I have a son at Dos Pueblos High School and it's a great pleasure for me to be here and participate as one of the co-presidents for the D-LAC and president at ELAC at Dos Pueblos High School. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Irlanda Gómez and I have a student that goes to Washington and it's a pleasure for me to be here. And I am the D-LAC secretary for that school and also secretary for the D-LAC Committee for the District. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm really excited to be back in person and to be here representing the D-LAC and the families with emergent multilingual students. We would like to begin by giving thanks. Thank you to the school board, nutrition services, support staff, ETS, educational technology, leadership at the school sites, the members of the ELAC, the maintenance and operations staff, the Family Engagement Unit and the Language Access Unit. We would also like to appreciate our superintendent, Ilma Maldonado, for her hard work this past year. We know it has not been easy and thank you for always being there for us. Thank you for being there for our families, for listening to us and taking us into account, for being there for our families and students. Believe me when I tell you that you have made the difference for all of them. And thank all of the board members for walking with us, for listening to our needs and also our concerns. We know that we face very challenging times but without a doubt, having your support has been a great relief for many of our students and to improve the path towards a successful academic career for our students. Thank you for understanding the need for language access and interpretation for all of our meetings. That was, without a doubt, one of our recommendations in previous years that we could no longer wait for, so thank you for including us and making us part of this school district. Also, we would like to appreciate profoundly Alejandra Gutiérrez and Rocío Pacheco García. Also to Ana Escobedo, Sean Carrie and the whole Family Engagement Unit. We appreciate that we have been invited to meetings like the COVID Task Force, where we were asked for our opinion and also important information was shared. We really appreciate the transparency and the information that came directly from the superintendent and other district leadership. Thank you for being part of that first step, which perhaps does not take us where we want to go, but it does take us out of where we were at. This year, we have observed great achievements and great areas of improvement. First of all, we would like to mention that the way that the school district handled COVID was, in our opinion, very effective and efficient. At the beginning of the pandemic, when the students began virtual learning, the district responded by providing internet access for all families. They offered hotspots, tablets and support with technology. After, when we came back in a hybrid manner, the adequate precautions were taken in order to assure the safety of all. And during all of these changes, we appreciate the communication that was delivered to families and also the way that we were included in the process. We are also very happy with the success of Meta and Dual Immersion Programs, which offer students the opportunity to learn English and Spanish in the academic language. Another thing was the support and the family engagement. This year, we saw the Family Engagement Unit grow and expand. Now, every single school in the district has a Family Engagement Liaison that helps families engage in the academic system. And we are also very happy with regards to hearing about the achievements of the Ethnic Studies Program. During our last D-LAC meeting, we heard the presentation from Mr. Art Nelson. And we really appreciate that students from different cultures and different backgrounds can learn about their own history and about other histories. And so now, my colleague, Manuela, will talk about the recommendations. Thank you. Good evening once again. And so this year, the three topics for our recommendations will be special education, family support and engagement, and safe spaces. And so I will begin with the first recommendation and this one is about special education. Last year, during one of our recommendations, we spoke about special education. We asked for more training to be able to focus more on the student strengths in special education. And this would be for teachers and classified staff members. As parents, we feel that our students do not have enough support to really be able to show their strengths. On the contrary, there is much focus on their weaknesses. And last year, we also requested that we develop more empathy among general education students towards special education students. And so going along with the recommendation from last year that was not achieved, this year, we would like to recommend an equity plan to make sure that we achieve these recommendations. We would like to have a space for parents of emerging multilingual students that are also in special education. Special education has certain processes that can be intimidating for parents, especially if our first language is not English. We would like to have this space in order to learn about our rights and learn about the process and know how to navigate the system and know how to advocate for our students. We recommend that all teachers and all staff members receive training because we believe that it will have a large impact on the well-being of our students. In special education, in our experience, many times, special education students are excluded from the classroom. The teachers and the staff members have a very important role and influence on whether a student feels included or not. There are few teachers that have the ability to include our children that have disabilities. As parents, we notice the difference when our students are included. When they are included in the group rather than being sent out with the support staff members, we can see the difference in their emotional state, in their interactions with other students. And we can also see their academic progress when that happens. Thank you very much. And now, I will invite Socorro to share the next recommendation. It's been a pleasure to be here. Thank you. Good evening once again. Our next topic for recommendation is in the area of family support and family engagement. As we mentioned earlier, we recognize the achievement of having more family engagement liaisons at each school, even though elementary schools share their liaison and they share it between two schools. And that means that they are only able to be at each campus half of the time, half of the week. In order to create community and really build relationships and offer consistency, we know that it is essential that there be a family engagement liaison assigned for each school and that should be full-time at each school rather than having one liaison and being shared between two schools. We support and we encourage the district to continue hiring bilingual staff members and bicultural staff members and multicultural staff members so that families feel understood and in turn generate trust so that they can get involved in their child's education. We would like to have more communication and more training and education with regards to reclassification where families can participate in meetings with the school board and know how to support our students. During the transitions from elementary school to secondary and then secondary to high school, we know that most of the families are not sufficiently informed as to what affects these academic programs in order for students to be prepared to attend college and the university. And so thank you and my colleague, Irlanda, will share the last recommendation. Thank you. Good evening once again. The next recommendation has a bit of personal experience because as a mother and as I once was a child, I went through some of these things myself. And so this last recommendation has to do with creating safe spaces in our schools. We are concerned that bullying has gotten worse in our schools. In our last ELAC meeting, we heard about the process and the protocols that the district and that schools have to respond to bullying. We believe that all of this information that was shared with us needs to be shared with all parents at each school. We would like to see data with regards to how effective the district's response is towards bullying. We would like to see anonymous surveys so that parents and families can share their experiences and that way, we can see if the district's response is equitable throughout the district. We believe it would be useful teaching families how to respond to a bullying incident, sharing the process and protocols, not just through Parents Square but also through other mediums of communication like the radio in order to assure that this information really reaches all families in the district. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to be here with all of you. And now, Marina will share the last few words for our closing. These recommendations are not only shown in the goals of the district, but it also represents a lot of the needs of families in the district. And we have made sure to include the voices and the recommendations of many families in the district. And so we hope that you will listen and take into account these recommendations and we hope that you develop a plan that includes these topics and that has follow-up. We know that students are successful when schools have successful relationships with families and we hope to be doing this work with all of you together. The appreciation that we have for you cannot be read, can only be felt. Thank you for identifying with our students.
Thank you for forming that beautiful rainbow of different colors that represents our school district, where all of our students and all of our families feel welcomed. Our families feel included and accepted as part of this school community. So thank you very much for that. And now, if you all have questions or comments, my colleagues and I are here to answer those questions. Thank you very much. First, we will take a public comment and then we will continue with questions. Thank you for your presentation.
President Munoz, we have one speaker, and that's Brian Campbell.
I'm done after this, so you can all relax. So, "All children should learn multiple languages, but should be educated in their country's dominant language. If a person cannot read and write in English in this country, they will not be prepared for the future, higher learning, positive jobs, professional jobs. With that said, I pray our Hispanic children receive the education they deserve so they can succeed. But for years under this board, we have not seen any positive results. In fact, we've seen this board shun successful programs. On the wall above you, behind your heads, it states, 'We prepare a student for a world that is yet to be created.' Well, let's take a look at how this district is preparing the students to go into the world with over half of the children not being able to read and write at grade level and not proficient in math. I forget what century we're living in again? Isn't this the 21st century where everybody should be entitled to a proper education? Ms. Alvarez, you expressed bewilderment that children being in school for more than six years still can't read and write with proficiency. Well, that's been around for a very long time. But in fact, you ran for election based upon this premise. You stated how you moved to the United States as a child and how you learned English in a matter of months and that you understood where our Hispanic community is not being educated. You said you knew how to help. And now you act surprised about the statistics of the Hispanic children not being able to read and write at grade level. A little weird there. This board chose to teach children the Spanish language instead of teaching children how to read and write in English, modeling its elementary school experience to the failed Adelante program where eight out of 10 children cannot read and write at grade level. This board shuns schools like Franklin and Washington Elementary, where 60% of the Hispanic kids can read and write at grade level, which is one of the reasons why Washington is one of the most sought-after transfer schools in the district. Doing quick math here, 20% success rate versus a 60% success rate. And the board chose the 20% success rate. Franklin has the same demographics as Adelante, so the district can't blame skin color or culture or socioeconomics. Yes, this district and board has repeatedly blamed poor academics on skin color and socioeconomics. Over the years, I have been asking the administrator and board members why our Hispanic community is not being educated. And they always have the same responses. It's because they're Hispanic. It's because their parents work hard. It's because they're low income. Excuse after excuse. They blame skin color and culture despite the success of Franklin Elementary School. Every child in public school
Thirty seconds.
has hard-working parents. Otherwise, we'd all leave for private schools. Every child is given the same access to education. So why does this board and administration always blame skin color and culture for their failures? Our Hispanic community needs to come to the table and push this board and this district as to why their children are not being prepared for the future or higher learning. Thank you. Have a great night.
That concludes public comment. Thank you.
Okay, board members. Ms. Alvarez? Good evening, and thank you very much for your presentation. And thank you for your time and for your preparation. And more than anything, thank you for your interest and the dedication that you have to improve your child's education. And thank you for understanding the importance of being part of our child's education as parents because the teachers have a role. They have a role to play, but the parents are also very important. It's important that parents contribute towards their children's education. And you all know that personally, I have experienced being in a classroom where you don't understand the language, don't know English and not sure what to do. So we are all putting a lot of effort into improving the instruction that our children receive. And it's gonna take time. This is something that we will continue working at. And with your help, we are going to be able to achieve it. I do have some questions with regards to your recommendations. If you can help me understand it better, please. One of the recommendations that you gave is with regards to the special education programs. And you say that we need to be more inclusive. And I agree, we need to be more inclusive. But I would like to hear an idea of how you think we can achieve this, how we can be more inclusive. Well, I have a child. Not sure if the microphone is on. You can push where it says, right there. Is the light on? Yeah, the light's on. Can you hear me? All right. So I have a child in special education. And I see that when he is included, this last year, when he's been included in his general education classroom, he has changed a lot academically and also emotionally. His change has been significant. I don't know if that answers your question? Yeah, I would like to have a better idea of how we can do a better job in including special education students. Maybe how we can support them, give them the support that you are asking for. Well, I think one thing is training the paraeducators and also the general education teachers. With regards to what can change our students' lives, I think that would be part of the recommendation. Training the teachers in general education and also the paraeducators in special education. Okay, thank you. And also, someone mentioned something about the liaisons, about having a representative at each school. Give me an idea of how you think that is going to help students and how is that going to help in supporting parents? Well, my idea is, like we said previously. Okay, so one of my ideas as a parent, I feel that, like I mentioned earlier, the recommendation is about having a liaison, a family engagement liaison at each school because many parents don't speak English and they don't feel comfortable in approaching the people that are in charge of these programs or like even at the office. If they see someone that is multicultural, that speaks their language, especially Spanish, because that's what we're asking for, parents feel a lot more comfortable because I myself went through that. I went through that stage where my kids were barely starting in kindergarten. I didn't know any English. Now, I know a bit. I feel a little bit better about it. But I put myself in the shoes of the people that are in that situation. Even some of my friends say, like, you know what? I don't speak any English at all. And so I feel that having a person at the school that speaks our language will make us feel comfortable and will make us feel like we can approach them. And especially the people that have special needs kids. I feel like we're all equal and we all should have that opportunity. Even though some children might have a special need, I know that they have what it takes to be able to get ahead. But as long as we have a family engagement liaison at each school, I think that will be achievable. Thank you. And with regards to bullying, and as we talk about safe spaces, you mentioned that we could provide communication through the radio to be more successful. What is it that you suggest? Because I know that our superintendent sends messages through Parents' Square frequently. So what would you suggest, like through the radio? How else could we be more successful in order to make sure that people have the information? What's your idea with regards to the radio or besides the radio? Yeah, you know, this is the first year that I participate in this committee. And we were talking about how years ago, they used to use the radio to provide information for all parents because not all parents read emails, unfortunately. And so they saw that when the information was shared over the radio with regards to the committees and what was ELAC all about and what was DLEC all about and what each school was working on, they saw an increase in parent participation. So we thought that maybe the radio could be a good medium that could be effective so that more parents can learn about how they can share an experience, maybe an unpleasant experience, especially with our kids. And I think that kids and young people, it's not just bullying between them, but I think bullying comes from the family itself. Not all parents think the same. Not all parents are able to speak to their children or not all parents seek support to be able to speak to their children about this. And so I think that my colleagues here and people who might have access to the information, we feel like the radio would be a good alternative. And from there, we could disseminate the information to all parents, all young people, all children, just all the community so that they know how to confront this problem. Thank you. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your time, for your interest and for your bravery for being here tonight. I also need to ask you why you don't invite me to your meetings? We will do it next time, for sure. And meetings are open to everybody. Everybody can attend our meetings. All of you are always welcome. But for the next meeting, we will definitely send you the link. And we're still doing it through Zoom, so we'll send you the link. All right. And the invitation is open to everybody. Everybody is welcome to our committee meetings. Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Muchisimas gracias. I want to say my comments in English to make sure that I'm clear. First of all, nothing could be more important than your work that you have shared with us tonight. Your part in our success is absolutely essential. This committee shows how much research you've done, how much discussion you had. And I'm really grateful. You make me feel very, very proud of our district when I hear you speak. You're so dedicated. I also thought it was so lovely that you recognized everyone that had gone, had been a part of this effort, but the ones who should be recognized are you. And we could not do it without you, whether it was COVID or Meta or ethnic studies or family engagement. We really can't do it without you. I thought your three recommendations were outstanding because we know we have so much more to do in special education, especially when it comes to students who are multilingual. And also just making sure that all our teachers have the right attitude, the right training and the right care for these students. Your suggestion about family engagement, I think, was the key because you're absolutely right. And it's our responsibility to make sure, as all district personnel and as a board, to make sure that you feel welcome and you feel valued. This will increase your feeling of engagement. And I was really moved by the comments about bullying because we know it is so serious, it's so hurtful. And an anti-bully, a safe space, is what every student deserves. And these communication ideas are absolutely essential. So again, I think you're the heart and soul of the district, and thank you.
Ms. Capps?
I'll add to that, and I just wanted to, Ms. Alvarez already asked my question, so I just wanted to convey my gratitude as well. You know the challenges. You see the challenges. You bring them forward. You educated this board about the over-classification of emerging multilingual in special ed. You did that, and we're making some changes. But you know that we have a lot more to do and things aren't as good as they should be. Your students aren't getting all of the opportunities that they deserve. And yet, you choose to lead with love. You choose to be a leader in, because you are a leader, in your schools, in this district. Socorro mentioned that family engagement leaders promote trust. Well, I say you promote love. I can feel it. And I think that's what we're all experiencing is that you constructively acknowledge the serious challenges, as we do as a board. And rather than point fingers or cause division, as we so often do have in this boardroom, but also in our society right now, you come forward with your heart and with love to propose very good changes. And that's real leadership. So I just want to acknowledge the heartfelt, that we feel it from the heart and because you are leading with love and you're leading from your heart. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I just wanted to express my gratitude and say how much joy it brings me to have such involved members of the community giving such great recommendations to the board. I thank each and every one of you for your service and all the work that you put in. I would love to attend one of your meetings alongside Ms. Alvarez, so hope to see you there. Thank you so much.
Okay, quiero expresar... I just want to share from the bottom of my heart my appreciation for everything that you do for the district and for representing your families. You are an example for your children and for other parents. I know what it's like to be nervous when you're going to speak, so I appreciate your bravery. And also, I appreciate that everybody is included. As you said, besides bullying, for parents to have someone at the school that speaks Spanish and also for the students, for the students, it's important to see that. When I started school, I didn't speak English at all. And I think if I would have had someone at the school site that spoke my language, I would have gone to that person when I had those moments where I felt anxiety. And I think that with regards to bullying, we need to be able to have many different opportunities to be accessible to the community. So I agree with messages over the radio. As people are working, they're listening to the radio. And also because those conversations come up when they're talking to others, like, hey, this happened to this person, and maybe we can do this better. And what can we do as a community? Because that's not what we want for any of our students and any of our family members. We want them to be at peace and we want them to feel that support. And we want them to know and feel that they are at school to learn and not have to worry about what they might encounter during the day. And also, the idea of attending college in order for them to focus on their well-being and know that they are somebody, that they can achieve their dreams. And so, thank you so much. I've been to some of your meetings already. And anything that I can do to help, I am here for you. And thank you very much for taking the time to prepare all of this for us. Yes, of course. You know, normally I don't give comments, but in this case... You know, normally I don't give comments, but in this case, I want to say thank you very much for your recommendations. But I also want to recognize how difficult it was for my own parents to teach me about education, knowing how difficult it was for them to come to a new country, to learn a new language, and learn about the new systems at the school, which are very different from our countries. And so I agree that you are showing a lot of bravery, and that bravery tonight is an example for all of us at the schools to follow. And we can use that as a reminder. And a lot of our principals are listening tonight, and many of them are saying that now they understand a little bit better how difficult it is to follow a meeting in a language that they don't understand. And so they have experienced a little bit of what it feels like to be monolingual and try to follow this meeting. So just with what we have done here tonight, along with your recommendations, I appreciate all of this for being good examples for all of us and good examples of collaboration between families. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and thank you to the interpreters that we had here as well, making sure that we are able to communicate with each other. And so now, speaking of being bilingual, we will take a break. We will take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
We will go ahead and continue with the discussion agenda number four, pandemic learning recovery and the expanded summer learning initial planning.
Back in action. Good evening again, President Munoz and members of the board and Superintendent Maldonado. Ms. Escobedo and I are pleased to present to you our first report for Summer of Learning 2022. I think there might be a slide before this one, Sandra. I don't know if you, maybe one more back. There we go. We'll take that one. Part of our ongoing efforts to support our students, and very specifically to continue to address pandemic learning recovery, since we know that the impact of the pandemic is still being experienced by our students. We want to reiterate at the outset of this presentation that in this, as in all our efforts, we are guided by a student-centered learning approach that is focused on offering a multi-tiered system of support. Next slide, please. And here you'll see our infographic and a reminder of our student-centered goals that guide us in all things as a district. Ms. Escobedo?
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Next slide, please. Okay, we're going to start by going down, going down the trip, down memory lane, back to Summer of Learning 2021, which we all know feels like 20 years ago. But it was last year, and during a pandemic, no less, we served a total of 2,633 of our Santa Barbara students in Summer of Learning. 904 of those students were elementary, 236 were junior high students, 851 were high schoolers, 466 participated in bridge programs, and 176 of our students participated in our Extended School Year Program, or ESY. At the end of SOELE 2021, we surveyed our students, and one of the questions we asked was, I received, or not, one of the statements we asked, I have received the help I needed from my teachers during Summer of Learning. And approximately 76% of those who responded strongly agreed, or just agreed with this statement. Our goal for this year is to increase that percentage during our Summer of Learning. Next slide, please. As you can see from our timeline, we have been actively planning for SOELE 2022 since February and will continue through May. But I'll share a little secret. We actually started planning the day after SOELE was finished last year. Our development process for curriculum, programs, and staffing is happening, has been happening from March through May. And our SOELE 2022 implementation, meaning that's when our students will be in class in Summer of Learning classes, will be happening from June 13th through July 8th for our elementary students, and all the way through July 22nd for our secondary, with our pre-K to K-bridge students planned for, planned their program for August. Next slide, please. Here is our Summer of Learning 2022 at a glance. And knowing that we will be coming back to give you another report as we get a little bit closer, please know that this is just at a glance, in general, our information for this summer. So as you can see, this overview really is a way for us to share the programming that we will be offering this summer. So our students in pre-K through high school will have opportunities to participate in academic learning recovery, enrichment, and course recovery programs. Our special education program will offer Extended School Year based on IEP needs. We will offer newcomer support or academies for our students in elementary through high school. And we will also, like I said already, will be offering a variety of bridge experiences throughout the summer. In the junior highs and the high schools, it will be kind of throughout their programs. And specifically for our pre-K transitioning to kinder, that bridge program will be happening in August. Next slide. Now, what you, what I'll be reviewing with you is very specifically for elementary, and just to give you, again, an overview of the main questions, who, what, where, and why. And very similar to what we saw last year for Summer of Learning, we will, in elementary, offer from pre-K through fifth grade students some kind of a Summer of Learning experience. The way we are prioritizing our students that will be invited to these programs is based on data that is prioritized by student needs, academic, social, emotional, and of course, different priority needs as identified by the teachers and the school sites. We are prioritizing our historically underserved students, newcomers, EML, our African-American students, our SPED students, our unhoused, socially economically disadvantaged, and our foster youth. And we are committed to keeping the class sizes during Summer of Learning to a small group of students of 15 to 1. In the what, we are, again, committed to staying focused on the SEL support, which we know is a great need, and it is something that we are planning to not just infuse within all the academic areas, but also to support with counselors onsite. We will focus, again, on literacy, reading, writing, comprehension, and phonics, math, number sense and operations, and of course, language development. When we're talking about the where, we're excited that this year, as learned from last year, it is important for our students to have these opportunities at their own school sites. So in the elementary, it is going to be offered at all nine of our elementary sites. Extended School Year will be happening at Monroe Elementary. After-school program will be available again this year. And of course, transportation for all of our current routes will continue to be offered. And why? I feel like we all know the reason why, but we wanted to make sure that we stated it. So it is continued commitment to mitigate the COVID learning losses, to address the academic and social-emotional needs that we know have continued through this year, and we will continue to mitigate as long as it is needed. And it is to provide experiences, an actually fun experience for our students in the summer, with many partnerships, again, like last year, and of course, hands-on learning opportunities. And to tell you a little bit about secondary, I'm going to hand it off, give it back to Ms. Carey.
Thanks, Ms. Escobedo. In secondary, if I can get the next slide. Just want to focus first on junior high being a space where we will focus on what we now call our priority students. And those priority students are identified through a combination of different data systems that we use to track student progress, but also is inclusive of our historically underserved students, including students with disabilities and students who are emergent multilingual learners. In junior high, students will have the opportunity specifically to focus on English language arts and math, but also in other subjects, including sometimes PE, science and social studies, and even electives. It just varies a little bit from site to site based on programming and staffing, and as well as development of student skills at the junior high, sort of the different kinds of organizational and, we might say, executive functioning skills that are needed to manage life as a junior high student as compared to what it was like to be an elementary school student. In the high school, many of those same things are true, same things are true, but also we have the very concrete indicator of those students who are credit deficient and need to recover credit, as well as learning in order to stay on track for graduation, as well as to repair their course credit and retain or recuperate A through G eligibility. So just as a reminder, students who earn a D in a course pass the course, meaning that doesn't necessarily take them off track for graduation, but it does take them off track for admission purposes to the UCCSU system. So we also want to make sure that summer is an opportunity for our high school students to maintain or recuperate A through G eligibility. We use online credit recovery, as well as what we might call traditional or classroom-based, face-to-face teaching and learning in the high school space. For both junior high and high school, we are offering opportunity, bridge opportunities. You'll see that they're listed for both, and so that helps support students transitioning from sixth to seventh grade, and then from eighth to ninth grade. I know we've been talking recently about the importance of supports for students in transition across those grade spans. And in particular, we have unique offerings, both for, for EMLs, both for our newcomers in the form of the Newcomer Academy that Ms. Escobedo mentioned, and that will be building on our experience with the Newcomer Academy last summer, as well as for long-term English learner students. The supports for English learner students who are LTALs will be built into the bridge opportunities. All of these summer school or summer of learning offerings provide students an opportunity to mitigate learning loss, but also an opportunity, as Ms. Escobedo said, to address social, emotional needs. And I want to just point out specifically, because of that point about transitions, that we really feel like, especially the bridge programs, help give students a running start into that next grade level or next school community, and help to promote a sense of connectedness to the school community. So we'll see some enhanced academic experiences for students during summer school programming, as well as some enhanced induction or orientation-type activities in August, particularly for traditionally underserved students. Next slide. Just going to pause and signal a shift from talking about our students and the programming that we're planning and supporting through our staffing with our student Summer of Learning to talk about our Summer of Learning opportunities for adults. We have set dates and communicated dates for our Leadership Summer Institute, which is happening in the third week of June. And we want to return at the close of our presentation here to the lens through which we view all our work, and that is our different focus areas, and that is how we organize our thinking about our adult learning as well. So we will be centering on our student-centered priorities and goals with a specific emphasis on MTSS. We already have set our dates for our August Teacher and Certificated, Certified, Summer Institute. And the reason I say both of those things is we want to make sure that it's very clear that it is not just teachers. So we have offerings for all kinds of certificated staff who work to support our classrooms or within our classrooms, school psychologists, school counselors, et cetera, et cetera. And even though it's not highlighted here yet, we want to signal to you, and we look forward to bringing you some more detailed plans about a classified Summer Institute, which will be a first kind of offering that we have, and that intentional away in our Summer of Learning offering. So just a little note about adult Summer of Learning offerings that we are planning, and as Ms. Escobedo said, we look forward to bringing you much more detailed plans as those firm up in the month ahead. We are here for any questions or comments you might have.
Any public comments? Okay, I guess we do have one. Thank you.
Thank you. President Munoz, we have one public speaker, and that's Moni DeWitt.
Hi, Board. Thank you, Laura. Yeah, so I'm very interested in this topic and also somewhat concerned. You know, I now co-run a parent resource center, and I've been seeing during the pandemic many students in tiers who are like fifth graders who haven't had their IEP and asked for it in third grade, but situation, so. And I do also want to go through the heart to get to the mind. I'm not blaming anyone, because I know across the country, literacy is a big issue. What I want to bring to the attention is, I think for the summer learning, it would be really good to see how many special ed students are in these groups, because it was hard to discern. You have a total of 2,000. Kind of first looked like it was 176, but that's unclear. And that group is 20% of your student body, and they are doing the worst of all on the CAPS scores even before the pandemic. By my calculations, there's a need of about 3,000. I also suspect the need for English language learners and multi-English, sorry messing that up, but our other group of struggling students, they also need the same approach as the dyslexics and the different learners. And that is one last point I want to briefly discuss, but the whole language and the structured literacy approach, and I'm not approaching this from a political point of view, in fact, I'd probably vote the same way most of you do. But when we don't learn the language by what's called decoding, structured literacy or the science, we don't learn how to break up words. And you might have some success at guessing at a word for a while, but when fourth and fifth grade comes, you crash, because you don't have the skill set and you don't have the muscles to decode. And that is what's happening throughout our district, because sadly, like many other districts, we are still clinging to the, to the whole-word approach. And I've talked to Susan Salsita, actually, today, and she's also considering doing a roundtable of experts, and we know several of them, and we'd be happy to have any experts you have on literacy and anybody else's ideas. But we, as a community, need to address it. And if you look up David Banks in New York City, he has, he has excluded and called balanced literacy actually dysfunctional, and he says it hurts black and white, uh, black and brown students. In our district, the whites and Asians, myself included, my husband and I were able to afford some extras, and my son is now successful. But we are also the second highest poverty, so that lays over. And our English language learners, socioeconomic, and also the dyslexics who are Latinx, they all struggle and they need the same decoding skills. So I implore you, we need to approach this as a community. Everybody needs to brace it. Parents need to help, but we do need the right approach, because we don't have it. And summer school is our only chance.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Moni. Thank you so much. That concludes public comment. Okay, Board, any comments or questions? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you both for your report. This brings me back to my first meeting. I remember going to the Summer of Learning and learning about this. I'm so excited that it's happening, happening again. We all saw the growth and impact that this had on students, and I am thrilled to see this happen again. I think this is exactly what we need, especially with the pandemic ending, and now we can help these students reintegrate themselves and get them a head start the next school
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Thanks. Thanks for the report. I think it was really helpful for you to remind us a little bit about what has been accomplished and also what you're hoping to accomplish this year. I'll just blow, you know, I'll just sound the alarm again for more incentives, because as I remember, we did not have as many junior high kids enroll as we hoped, especially because it's such an important time for them. So I know when you'll come back, you'll tell us more about all the creative and crazy and wild incentives. So I know when you come back, you'll tell us more about all the creative and crazy and wild incentives that you'll have for the kids. And I'm hoping that maybe you would consider for the littlest kids that maybe it's a summer without iPads.
Ms. Alvarez?
And maybe you already covered this, so if you did, I need repetition. Would you remind me of the targeted ELD for our EMLs that it's done in the summer? Or was that just me thinking that it happens, or does it happen?
It absolutely does happen. It is part of the schedule of the program for every day this year. By the way, it's five days. I don't think I included that for, did I? Okay, good. So yes, the day will be broken up for elementary specifically, and I'll let Ms. Carey speak for secondary. For elementary, the day will include, like I said, the SEL will be infused within all the content areas. We'll have like language arts, so reading, writing, comprehension, phonics. Then we'll have math, very focused on numeracy, operations and number sense, and language development, ELD, which will be just continued our same program, our FOS program that we know, just like we heard Ms. Lockridge say. It is such a rich program that we have enough materials to carry us through either with this current program or with supplementing with whatever is needed for our newcomers very specifically. But yes, that's all part of that language development section.
And what, how are we getting this communication out to parents and students so that we can hopefully increase participation?
So it's by invitation, and the invitations are actually right now. We have not sent out the invitations yet because many of our schools are still finishing like this last round of interventions. So they want to see how the students end up doing with that. Once that's done, this data, massive database was collected that showed all the priorities for all of our students. Every school site got their own list. They are reviewing that with the teachers. And again, they're saying we're trying to keep our class size as small, so there's an invite per grade level that's being sent to the highest priority students, and that will be happening next week. So the teacher, the school site will be handing those or giving those invitations to the parents and the students.
And we make sure that nobody's turned away, right?
So we are starting with our highest priority students, and that's who we will, if they can't make it, then we'll go down the list to the next highest priority.
Great. And what about staffing? When will we be hiring people for summer?
Great question. And so we have already sent out, that was part of the planning that we have done. And we have already, very happy to report that we have more than needed staff as far as certificated, which is always a win. And our principals are looking at those because it's happening at their own sites. Priority will be given to the teachers who are at their site since they know the students best. So that's, I will give you guys that update the next time we report specifics, number of teachers, classified, et cetera.
And I'm really pleased to hear that there'll be a classified institute. I think it's long overdue, so thank you. And training, especially for our PERS, as we heard before in the meeting, the great need. So thank you for doing that.
Our pleasure.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much. I, okay, I think we will go on to the next report, which is the, let me see, the universal preschool, the pre-K.
Hello again. So this is our last report of the night. Very excited to bring this to you, this time with my partner, Kim Hernandez. And so we are excited to share with you tonight information on the expansion of universal pre-K and transitional kindergarten, also known as TK, as a result of California Assembly Bill 130 that was passed last, in the summer last year. Tonight, you'll be hearing about what that means for Santa Barbara Unified Students and Families. You'll be hearing about that five-year rollout plan, the academic benefits and school site impact. And last, but certainly not least, we will also be sharing the fiscal impact that this will have on our district. Next slide, please. At Santa Barbara Unified, we have long known that success for college and careers begins with the quality early education experience. And I'm sure Wendy is listening to us agreeing. This five-year phase-in expansion timeline actually began this school year with the planning and preparation phase. Ms. Daisy Ochoa, our Administrator of Early Childhood Education, will be sharing our final plan for board approval in June, so stay tuned. The first significant change of this rollout happens next school year, the 2022-2023 school year, when all four-year-olds who turn five between September 2nd and February 2nd will be able to enroll in transitional kindergarten and actually are already currently enrolling at any of our elementary schools. And that enrollment is happening as we speak, both online and in person at the school sites. This is an additional two-month eligibility from the current birthdate cutoff being December 2nd. So we're going from December 2nd to allowing students whose birth dates go all the way through February 2nd to enroll if they turn five. For the 2023-2024 school year, we expand age eligibility by another two months. So this is what you're seeing here. Every year, the expansion, the adding of another two months of eligibility based on birth dates. So by 2023-2024, our four-year-olds turning five by April will be eligible. The next school year, 24-25, another two months added. So our four-year-olds turning five by June 2nd will be eligible. And finally, finally, by 2025-2026, all children who turn four by September 1st will be eligible to enroll in transitional kindergarten. So what does universal TK mean for our students here in Santa Barbara? It means that all four-year-olds will have access to free pre-K TK experiences by 2025-2026. It means that all of our elementary schools will offer a TK program and offer after-school care for those students, TK K through six. It also means that our TK students-to-adult ratio will be 12 to 1. And I want to be very clear on this point. The ratio is 12 to 1, student-to-adult ratio. The class size average will be 20 to 24, which means that we will need two adults in a class of 20 or 20 through 24. One teacher and one paraprofessional. Families will continue to have choices between state preschool programs, Head Start, private preschool, or no pre-K at all if that's what they choose. So now, to share the fiscal impact and what that means for Santa Barbara, I will hand it off to my colleague, Kim Hernandez.
So as Ms. Escobedo explained, UTK is a great idea for families and for students. We all agree. Our governor feels that it is an important way to give students a good start in school. That's why the State of California allocated funding for all eligible TK students. That includes ours. But this funding will be going to none of the community-funded districts because it's all going to be going into the LCFF, which is the Local Control Funding Formula. We are a community-funded school district, which means that our funding is not the LCFF. It is our community property taxes. So this funding that is allocated for our students and it's allocated by our students, by our student count, will not be coming to us because there's no vehicle to get it here. It's not going to, it's not part of our property taxes. It's something separate. So what does this mean for Santa Barbara Unified? We will have significant costs because we are going to be having one additional grade. We're happy that we're going to be having these four-year-olds coming to our school. We're very excited about it, but that means a lot of extra costs. The per-student funding across all the rest of our grades, TK through 12, will have to decrease because we only have so much money and we're not getting any additional funding, but we will have additional staffing costs. We will have some facility changes. And so this will put a little bit of an impact on our budget. So what does that look like? If we just look at our additional staffing costs for the first year, as Ms. Escobedo explained, it's just a two-month pushout for the grade. So we're looking at our TK as we have now and our kindergarten as we have now, and we're estimating that we're really only going to need one extra teacher. But as Ms. Escobedo also explained, the 24 up to 24 students in a class means we need extra paraeducators. So we're going to need at least nine extra paraeducators to go into all of those TK classes that we have. So for the very first year, then, we're looking at about a $471,000 increase to our budget. As we go further out, the next year, we're going to add another teacher plus another paraeducator. And so for 23-24, we're looking at 622,000. Third year, that's 924,000. And by the time we're fully phased in, it's a $1.2 million increase to our budget every year ongoing that if something doesn't change at the state level and if we don't receive extra funding for it, that will just impact our budget negatively because we just, that's not built in. That's just a continuing, ongoing cost. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. And there are other costs that are going to be associated with this extra grade. So there are facility costs associated with TK classrooms. TK classrooms are larger than our regular classrooms. Our regular classrooms are, you know, about 950 square feet, but a TK classroom is 1,350 square feet. So it's larger, more space for the little kiddos to spread out and run around. We also have to have appropriate bathrooms and place spaces nearby. And the classrooms have to be located close to parent drop-off and parking. So it's going to be a reimagining of spaces on some of our campuses. And there are some of our buildings that we have already started to build that if we had known this was coming, we probably would have done things a little bit differently. So we are currently assessing our facilities, and we have submitted for facility improvement grants to help pay for the costs. Those grants, I think they are submitted next week. So we'll see if we can have any extra funding to help us out with some of these facility changes. So I said we weren't receiving any funding, but we are receiving a little bit of funding that is tied to the universal TK, and that's the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, the ELOP, if you've ever heard that one. This provides after-school and summer school for TK through sixth grade. And one of the reasons why this is really important for our TKers is that part of the, what we have to provide for our TKers is an additional 30 days of instruction. And that's, I think it's nine hours, am I correct? Nine hours of instruction that we need to provide. So this ELOP or the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program is money that is going to help us with the summer school and after-school programming. So that is $1.3 million, and it must be spent by June 2023. Next slide, please. So this one, thank you. This one is just our multi-year projections. I've condensed it so it doesn't have all of the extra lines in it, just so you can see totals. So total revenue, total expenditures, and our net income slash loss. So currently, we're in the 21-22 school year, and we have been estimating for this year and the next two years deficit spending. And what that means is that we're spending more than the revenue that we have received. And part of this has to do with all of this, the relief funding that we have received is money that extends over a three-year period. And depending on how you're spending it in those three years, it can look like you are deficit spending. But what we really need to do after 23-24 is really tighten everything up and make sure we're not continuing to do that. The reason is, we have reserves that help us to, you know, weather tough times. Because we receive property taxes, we have to always have, maintain a certain amount of reserves because we don't always know how much property taxes we're going to receive in a year. LCFF-funded districts have an enforcement that comes out every single month, but for us, it comes out in chunks throughout the year. So we have to maintain a reserve so that we can protect ourselves in the case that property taxes in a, you know, strange year come in less than we expect. And it does happen in recession times and other times it does. So if you look at the 23-24 school year, our unrestricted reserve is 12.51%. And as you board members have asked us to keep our reserves above 10. So we need to make sure we do that. But this budget that you see here is before we add any universal TK costs. So going forward, you know, after 25-26, we've got $1.2 million that we have to add in the expenditure column. So it's just kind of a little bit, you know, uncomfortable knowing that that's coming and knowing that we don't, at this point, have funding to cover it. So, oh, next slide, please. So what can we do? Well, there's a lot of advocacy that's going on right now for community-funded districts, and that's a good thing. So, and we have worked very hard at Santa Barbara Unified to try to help that advocacy. We have contacted our local officials, Senator Limon, Assembly Member Bennett. We have joined other members of professional organizations such as the School Services of California, the Association of California School Administrators, and the California Association of School Business Officials to elevate this situation to the state level. Because it's not fair, if anything else, it's just not fair that our students have been counted, but they're not getting any money to help them with the situation. And one of the questions is what happens to that money? What happens to that money that doesn't come to us? It just goes to the state's bottom line. It doesn't get spent until they reallocate it in the ending fund balance, and it starts all over again. So we have also spoken to our Capitol Advisors to seek the best way to let Governor Newsom be aware of the situation that's happening at Santa Barbara Unified. But there's probably more that can be done. Maybe we can all do a little bit.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hernandez. And board members, I'd like to join in the call to action that Ms. Hernandez is laying out before you. Tonight, we'd like to ask your support as board members to lend a voice to this call to action and advocacy for community-funded districts like ours. As you know, and I am sure you agree, adding a TK grade will help so many of our families, so many of our students, people like me that didn't get an opportunity to go to preschool, kindergarten. It gives us a leg up to really get into the groove of what education is at a young age, to develop language. to develop language skills and learning skills. But that comes at a cost. It will come at a cost, and at some point, our fiduciary responsibility will be to really make very difficult decisions on that impact to other programs in our school district, other grades, class sizes and such. And we would hate to have to make that decision down the line. So it's a bit of a paradox that we're having to ask. I will be asking, we are going to ask that Santa Barbara community speaks, and at the state level, people listen. We are an influential community that is made up of many people, parents, elected officials, leaders, students. We're going to ask everyone to please send letters to the governor's office, asking them to reconsider how TK is funded, to know that we agree that there needs to be this program expansion, but that it cannot come at the cost of the students that we serve who generate these funds. So please, join us in this call to action and help spread the word. We will be sending out something through our communications office to everyone tomorrow morning. Easy, easy one-or-two button push that will get those letters generated. And with that, we conclude our comments in our presentation on UTK and its importance. But also, please help us spread the word.
Okay, and we'll go to public comment.
We just have one. Moni, do it.
Yes, hi. Yeah, I think this also is a very important area, and it may save us a lot of expense in the long run. But one resource that I continually wonder why our district has this and hasn't liquidated it for students' need is that armory. You know, Superintendent Matsyoko spent $26.5 million on it, and yet we have high need. Many of our students are years behind in literacy and other areas, and I think I just would love to have an answer on why we're holding on to that piece of real estate over addressing our students' needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado, for that great information. As you know, this is something that I have been working on for months and months and months, and it's a huge deal. It's a very, very big deal. This is something that I'm extremely concerned about as far as the impact to our district. Looking at the multi-year projections, Kim, Ms. Hernandez, it would be really helpful if you do a calculation, the multi-years, and back out all the one-time monies so that we can have a really, a true idea of what it looks like. If that deficit spending of, I believe, was $7 million one year, let me go back to the slide. Let me see here. Yes, I believe in 22-23, $7 million. However, as you mentioned, is because maybe the monies haven't been received yet. So it would be very helpful for us to really know what it looks like. If you back out those one-time monies, and also, what does that mean, the one-time expenditures? What are we going to do with those? Are they going to be eliminated? What are we going to do? That'd be really helpful. And then, in addition to that, is what can we do right now? The May revision is coming up. The governor is going to do the May revision. Right now, we have 22 legislatures who have signed on to our cause, basically. So we're doing well as far as legislatures, but we're not doing well as far as the governor. Now it's in the governor's hands. So what we need to do is exactly what Dr. Maldonado said, and she'll be sending the letter that I have a sample here. I've already sent mine as a board member. I've already sent mine as a community member. So it's really important that everyone at Santa Barbara Unified, all of the employees that wish to send it, it literally takes three minutes or less. It's a template, and you copy the template. It's a dropdown menu, the link to the governor's office, the subject, there's a budget 22-23, and it's to support TK. This is generating, this UTK students are generating about $360 million. There's 150 basic aid or community-funded districts. That only totals to $16 million. That's a drop in the bucket, and it's cost-neutral. The money's already being generated. We're not taking money away from anybody else. For Santa Barbara Unified, it's $1.2 million. So do the math, $1.2 million in $360 million. It's just a matter of getting that mechanism so that we are funded. I spoke to Joyce this morning, our SBTA president, as far as the importance of SBTA president, CSEA president, to also write this letter. We can make a difference, and if we don't do it now, it's not going to happen. And this is forever and ever and ever way after I'm no longer a board member. This is going to impact our kids, our teachers, where the rubber meets the road, and that's one of the reasons I ran for the board, because I care for public education, I care for the kids, and we can do it. We can make a difference. Unfortunately, if we were to sell assets, property, we cannot use that for operational costs. It's the law. It's the education code. We cannot use it to educate kids, to pay teachers. We can only use it for other facilities projects. So we are limited as far as we can do, but we can do it. And here's a sample of the letter. It's very easy. It's already done for you. Please look for the email tomorrow from Dr. Maldonado and press that button. We can make a difference. Thank you.
Ms. Capes?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to Ms. Alvarez for first bringing this to my attention. I know we're all clearly very motivated to get the funds that we need to do this important work. So I just had a question, Ms. Escobedo, about the timeframe that you laid out. Is that something that we've come up with, or I'm just curious, that came down from the state?
That is from the state as part of the plan and the bill.
Makes sense. Okay. Well, count me in. I love advocacy, and I will help, and this is just step one. I think we can galvanize the community. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you. I appreciate the numbers, and the numbers are scary, but I am very positive. I think that this is going to happen. I think that there will be enough advocacy and enough reflection on the part of the legislature and the governor to say, if you really, really care about these kids, then you will provide this funding. So I'm feeling very positive about it, and I'm very excited about offering Universal TK. I think it will change the face of education in California, and for lots of reasons. I also just wanted to mention that I have read that there will also be competitive grants available for teacher training and teacher recruitment, and I hope that we seek them as strongly as possible. That's it.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I'd like to express my support in Universal TK as well. I think this is super important, especially in what we were saying about being proactive with education and starting early. And I'd love to help with student advocacy because I'm sure that would help to hear from the students, how important this is. So, yes, we will talk about that later. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, just to, you know, also add my support. Any way that I could help get signatures and get those letters out there, I'd be happy to reach out to my contacts and staff.
A huge thank you to Senator Monique Limon. She really went to bat for us. She wrote a Dear Colleague letter, so she started the ball rolling, and, I mean, she really stepped up for us. So a huge thank you to her as well.
Okay, thank you. If there's, let's see, Dr. Maldonado? Any thoughts? Okay. Okay, with that, we have made a record here. There's coming events that, I'm sorry, Ms. Capes? Yes.
Sorry about that. I thought you were wrapping up.
Coming events. I know that one of the things that, you know, I'm grateful for is the listing of the theater performances here, the DP, Beauty and the Beast, and San Marcos, The Little Shop of Horrors. And Ms. Cap?
Actually, this goes with the last one on meetings, but I just noticed in sort of looking at summer planning that our website doesn't have our board meetings past June, so I was just hoping that those can be included. Yeah, okay, great, because I just want to make sure, as we're making some summer plans, that we know when we're meeting. So, yeah, they stop in the June one. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I'd like to let everyone know tomorrow is denim day. April is Sexual Harassment, Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and denim day is the last Wednesday of April. So I encourage you all to wear denim tomorrow to raise awareness around sexual assault survivors and harassment. So, yeah, everyone wear denim. I'd like to see you all with jeans tomorrow, even though I won't see you, but...
Maybe we could take a picture and share it on our social media and for your Instagram. Okay, so the next meeting is Tuesday, May 10th, and tonight's meeting of the, oh, go ahead.
I have a future agenda item I would like to propose. There's just been some questions from the community about my seat. Should I be successful in my election for the Board of Supervisors? And I've had a handful of questions, and so I would respectfully ask that that be agendized for us in the coming, maybe past June. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Okay, so, let's see, 9:15? We're going to have to push that to next time. We'll see you May 10th. I'm just kidding. Tonight's meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District is adjourned at 9:15.